Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the meeting of the City Council Successor Agency to the Reavailment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting for November 13, 2017. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the order of agenda?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Nada, anybody want to change anything around? All right. Report from closed session, Mr. Rubens.
Mr. Mayor, there's no report of closed session tonight. One of the items that you considered is on the public agenda later tonight.
All right. Number five is presentations. We have some presentations this evening for proclamation to Ben Elliott, Aaron Litz- Litzenson? Lewitson, thank you. And J.D. Paul, Boy Scout Troop 321, upon receiving their Eagle Scout awards. So let me come down and get you gentlemen squared away. Hello? Good. Gentlemen, want to join me up here, please? Thank the audience. So we'll go up. These are three of our finest, three of our finest young men, all Eagle Scouts. They've all done various projects. And what I'm going to do is ask them to give their name, what high school they go to, and what year they are, and if, or high school or college, depending on what it is, and what their project was. So we'll start with you.
Hi, my name is Aaron Lewitson. I'm a senior at St. Francis High School in Mountain View, and my project was to build a new picnic area at Aguala Park.
Hi, I'm Ben Elliott. I'm a senior at Sequoia High School, and my project was to build an informational kiosk for the native plants garden at Brenakers.
Hi, my name is J.D., and I go to Sequoia High School, and I'm a senior. And my project was building a lending library at Arroyo School in their new garden.
Gentlemen, there you go. Very well, thanks a lot. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, thank you, good luck, thank you. Again, like I said, that's how our community is, has these young men that come in and do this great work. And I'm very honored to give those to you gentlemen tonight. All right. Next item is six, public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on something that is not on the posted agenda? All right, moving on. Number item seven is consent calendar. These motions are usually done, or these items are usually voted on in one motion. Is there anyone wishing to, we do have some speaker cards for 7L, so we're going to pull that off. Is there anyone else wishing to pull anything off the consent calendar? All right, I don't see any motion for everything but 7L.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval on items 7A through K and M. Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
We have an ordinance that we need to read.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I apologize. And adopt ordinance number 1525, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending Title V, Business Taxes, Taxes, Licenses and Regulations; Title VIII, Health and Safety; and Title XVIII, Zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code to Regulate Commercial Cannabis Activities Within the City of San Carlos.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
And the second, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes, except I register no on item I.
Thank you. And Mayor Gasilli?
Yes. All right, 7L was pulled off. Sometimes we put this at the end, but we're not going to do that tonight. We're going to discuss it right now. It has to do with plans and specifications for St. Francis Way and Beverly Drive calming project. So we have some speakers. I don't think we need a staff, Mr., do you want to have a staff report or just go right to public comment?
That'll be up to the pleasure of the mayor and the city council.
Finally, we want to see what the questions are. Mr. Hudson? Robert Hudson?
Yes.
Please step up.
Yes, sir.
Please, to this microphone. And you have two minutes, sir. Ask your question or whatever your comments are.
Okay, thanks. Well, I represent a group of residents on Beverly Drive. I also reside on Beverly Drive. And it's in regard to the proposed traffic calming project. We had met with the city engineer back in May, and several of the residents had numerous questions about the project and so forth. And then we were advised that the funding for the project had not come through. And so we weren't, we didn't receive any further communication on that. And in reviewing the agenda tonight, I was quite surprised to see it on the agenda. I met briefly with the city engineer this afternoon and had a couple of questions, but I feel that the resident committee has several unanswered issues. And what I'm requesting is, can we hold that project until there's some interaction between the residents and the city engineer as to what could be done? The main concern of the residents is pedestrian safety on Beverly Drive.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Michael James?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I also live on Beverly Drive. Robert's my next door neighbor. And we've been engaged in a discussion with Department of Public Works over this issue actually quite some number of months back ago. And last we heard, the project was indefinitely deferred for lack of funding. There are parts of this project that we support and also parts that we oppose. And we think that through more discussion, we might be able to come up with some kind of agreement that's workable to the, to the neighborhood and the city more broadly. But I would encourage the council to please defer this issue for the time being until we can have such discussions. And I guess, last I heard, we had an email back in, I think, June that substantiates all this.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Ko? Or Ms. Ko? J. K. H. Am I saying that right, or perhaps they're in another room? Do you remember, Crystal?
I don't.
Okay. Well, we'll, if they come, we-
Here we go.
Oh, here we go. Come on up, ma'am. Sorry. Don't run, don't run, don't run. Just take your time, relax. We have plenty of time tonight. Just take your time and say what you'd like to say, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First of all, we would like to thank you for paying attention to the San Carlos community and spending time and effort in calming the traffic of our street. I echo what Michael James said and Robert before him, that we need more time to kind of discuss as a community. We really love that CAVE take the time to listen to all of us. We're in the middle of the discussion. I think we've come very close to, you know, coming together and making sure that the small street that we have is safe for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. City Manager?
This issue was just brought to my attention this afternoon, and so I don't have details as to what specifically they're talking about. It is obviously very late in the process. This has already been to the council. The council's already approved the plans and specs. We do have bids, and as you know, the last time we bid the project, it came in at more than twice the engineer's estimate.
Right.
And so the council chose not to proceed with awarding a contract at that time and gave us direction to go back out to bid when we thought we'd get more favorable responses from contractors. That's what we've done. The bid we have is very close to the engineer's estimate now. It's good for 60 days, so we could push this off one more meeting.
All right.
But the council would have to take action at their next meeting or risk having the bid expire.
All right. Gentlemen, what do you want to do?
Through the chair? Yes, sir. Personally, I mean, I don't quite know what, what the issue, the issue is, but I wouldn't mind deferring this to the next meeting for the opportunity for staff to come back and explore this a little more with the residents and then put it back to us.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
My question for Jeff is, are there some things that we can do in the interim? Are there, you know, they've said that there were some things that they were happy to see happen? Or is it sort of an all or nothing thing?
It's the contract, so.
Well, the item on the agenda for you tonight is all or nothing. You're awarding the bid of the project as it's been designed or not. So beyond that, I can't really speak to it because I'm not sure what the specific issues are that have been discussed between the community and the Public Works Director.
Thanks. Mr. Johnson?
So just for my clarification, we're talking about the speed bumps on St. Francis, is that right?
Oh, Beverly Drive, Beverly Drive.
Well, it's all one project.
One project, yes.
It's a project that's come-
But Beverly's dot close, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, from, from my perspective, like, if, if my colleagues want to wait till the next meeting, that's okay. I think that, you know, we debated this. There were some people that weren't happy with the outcome of the debate, but most of the people on the street were. So I would be okay proceeding with the project as it is, given that there's a lot of people on that street who have been waiting a long time for traffic calming.
Mr. Grokot?
I don't know why, but on the night that we discussed it, it seems to me, all the commentary we got from residents were people from St. Francis.
Right.
Maybe from Beverly, so I have no problem with delaying it if it doesn't hurt things and allowing the folks from Beverly to-
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Rubens, or?
You'd have a motion to continue the item to the next meeting.
Do we hear a motion to continue until the next meeting?
I move to continue the item to the, to the next meeting. Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Gasilli?
Yes. All right. So we'll hear that on the 27th. Okay. Okay, the next item is item 8A, consideration of adopting an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 658, 58A, imposing moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunition or firearms as defined in Municipal Code Section 9.24.010. Before we get started, I just want to explain to folks what's going to happen tonight relative to process. Staff will give a short report, and then the applicant will have about 15 or 20 minutes to, to do whatever they want to do, either talk or slideshow or whatever they want to do. Excuse me, whatever they want to do. After those two things occur, the council will then ask questions of staff or perhaps the applicant. And after that, then we'll have public comment. And after that, then we'll vote on what we're going to do. We'll have a discussion and vote on what we're going to do. Does everybody understand the process? Okay, so we all know what we're coming into? All right? Thank you. I, I'll say this probably 5,000 more times, but really appreciate if everybody could be respectful, that we think set up here that you may agree with, these things perhaps you don't agree with. But this isn't a football game. This is a legal proceeding, so we want to make sure everybody's respectful of everybody's viewpoint. And believe me, I'll remind all the speakers of that same thing when they come up for public comment and, and the other areas. So thank you very much. And staff, we have a staff report? Okay?
I'll make this fairly brief, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council and the community. My name's Jeff Malpe. I'm the city manager here in San Carlos. It is absolutely outstanding to see so many members of our community here this evening. We love a full house. We love it when our community comes out, talk with us about how they feel about issues here in their community, regardless of your points of view. As the mayor said, we hope that everybody will remain respectful and supportive in the tradition of our community and our civic life here at City Hall. I'm presenting this evening to the city council an urgency ordinance to consider imposing a 45-day moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunition and firearms here in San Carlos. At their last city council meeting, the city council directed staff to prepare this item for tonight's agenda. And passage of this particular item requires a four-fifths vote of the city council. For decades here in San Carlos, land use laws have allowed for retail sales of ammunition and firearms in accordance with state and federal laws, in any area of the city that allows retail sales. There are no existing local conditions regulating these types of sales currently in San Carlos. It is important to note, however, that the Second Amendment, as it's been interpreted by the Supreme Court in a number of cases, does specifically allow for land use regulations within the typical zoning laws of a community. Should the council adopt this ordinance tonight, it will immediately prohibit such sales until either the moratorium expires or new regulations are put in place by the city council. San Carlos has used moratoriums on numerous occasions in the past for business and residential This is a moratorium and an urgency ordinance is, is a typical land use zoning tool that has been used not only in this community, but communities all across the state of California for decades. We've used it here for issues such as dollar stores, lot splits in residential areas, massage parlor regulation changes, chain store ordinances, and numerous other business-related regulatory activities that the city council has put regulations in place on. Other communities in our neck of the hoods, such as Los Gatos or Boulder Creek or Santa Cruz County, have in recent years used moratoriums as a tool to study local zoning regulations related to retail sales of ammunition and firearms. A moratorium is essentially like calling a timeout. It allows the communities elected officials, staff, and community the opportunity to take That's not going to be enough time. As this is a land use issue, it's required by law to go to the Planning Commission before it comes back to the City Council. As I said earlier, we'll need to hire an expert to help navigate through the regulatory environment here, and in San Carlos tradition, we'll want to have a number of study sessions and community meetings prior to this going to the Planning Commission for any potential vote. Given the holidays and where we're at on the calendar for council this year, it's just not going to be possible to get this done in 45 days, so we'd be coming back. The way the law works in this regard is, we can come back within the 45 days for an up to 10-month and 15-day extension. That brings the total to one year, and then in the future, the City Council could consider another up to one-year extension. So there's two years that potentially a moratorium could be in effect while this is being studied. During that time, the staff would need to show and demonstrate all the steps that we'd be going through. I highlighted a few earlier, as you know, you've been through this process before. There are quite a few steps that we go through in engaging the community and looking at the creation of any new land use regulations. We've heard from hundreds, if not thousands, of residents in the last few weeks on this particular issue. They've reached out to the city and asked in all sincerity for this particular moratorium to be put into effect on this issue, so the community may have the time necessary to make thoughtful, informed decisions about their community's land use policies regarding gun and ammunition sales. This is no different than many other communities in terms of how they've approached sensitive land use issues on this and other subjects. As such, I would recommend that the City Council adopt the urgency ordinance before you this evening, and will be happy to answer any questions that we're able to this evening.
Does the council want to wait till we have the Turner presentation and just ask one set of questions, or do you want to start now?
I'd rather wait.
I think wait till we get, and then we can ask both sides, both folks. So, from the folks from Turner, are you folks ready? Do you have an estimate of approximately how long your presentation is?
Approximately.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing us today, and my name's Rob Zibek, I'm the Vice President of Sales and Operations. I would say I'm the one who got us into all this, because I was in the area and I realized it's such a great area when you drive around and look at all the bay area for fishing, all the lakes and that, and you realize, wow, this is an outdoor paradise up here. And we have 21 stores right now based out of Southern California, and what I want to do first is fill you in on who we are. So, we opened in 1971, we started as a company selling rods and reels out of one store in Long Beach. We opened a second store in 1975 in Reseda. That store, it's, Reseda is a part of LA City. That store is still open today, it's been open over 40 years in the city of LA. We have over 500 employees while providing 401K, healthcare, and vacation benefits to employees. We have employees that range from college freshmen needing part-time work to retired veterans looking for something to do in their free time. This location would provide 25 jobs and five management positions in your community. We also sign up more people for California Hunter Safety Course than any other dealer in the state. We offer firearms training through local ranges at every store. So, along with that, I wanted to know who I am. I started here when I was 18 and a freshman in college. I continued while in school and I eventually joined the Army Reserve in that time. After that time, I became a manager and eventually moved on to this position. I've been here now 27 years. Bill's been with us 26 years, our CEO's been with us for over 30 years. I have three daughters, I'm a soccer dad, I've coached probably 20 girl soccer teams in my community. I personally feel safer taking my children into our stores than I would go into an ATM or a convenience store or a gas station. Our stores are not unsafe to be in. Turner's in the community. So, it was very convenient that the Boy Scouts were here today, because as, I don't know if you know, they all had patches. Some of those patches were patches for shooting firearms.
Rob, if you could move more toward the microphone and just speak to us, it'd be great.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You just want to get it on the record, you want to get it on the record.
Yes, okay. So some of their patches on there are for shooting events, so we take part in multiple events, we like to be part of the community. We offer a youth safari day that we do in, with the Safari Club of Orange County, where over 5,000 kids get to experience paintball, kayaking, all types of different outdoor events. We sponsor youth fishing days at the park, local park lakes. We do youth fishing trips on boats, and I think the majority of the trepidation involving us coming here is that you don't know who we are. In six months, I honestly think you'll fall in one of three camps. You'll fall in, you'll forget the Orvin there because we don't do anything negative to the community. Two, you'll find us at a public event and think, wow, they actually are, we actually kind of do like them a little bit being here. Or three, you might actually find yourself shopping at our location. So, that's it for me, thank you for hearing me, and—
Thank you, Rob.
Good evening, my name is Bill Ortiz, I'm Vice President of Compliance for Turner's Outdoorsman. I thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and the council for hearing us tonight as you guys consider this moratorium on retail establishments that also sell firearms or ammunition. We vigorously oppose the moratorium outright because we believe the conclusion of a hastily-prepared staff report citing, and I'm going to quote and read this, "an immediate threat to the public peace, health, welfare, safety, specifically including possible permanent damage to the city's aesthetic, health, safety, and economic interest arising from the potential new retail firearms uses," end quote, "to be without merit to the opening of a new Turner's Outdoorsman store." The report cites extensive public comments citing concerns from the less than 12 people who offered comments. It doesn't establish any citable references or facts that a sporting goods store which also sells firearms would create such a threat as claimed by those speakers. The often anecdotal and in some cases incorrect statements offered by those speakers do not establish that urgency. Instead, the staff report includes a publication from the California Department of Justice that actually establishes what California dealers and gun owners must do in order to obtain and sell firearms. The staff report cites action by other cities that was mentioned earlier. Those were done in and of themselves, not necessarily as a reaction to, hey, we need to do this here in the city of San Carlos because other cities have done so. A moratorium, if I can really dwell down on that, is different than the residents coming to council and saying, hey, we'd like to do something about how we handle firearms retail establishments. There's a distinction between the two. Our biggest crux of tonight is the urgency clause. Is there truly urgency based on what we're going to tell you about Turner's Outdoorsman? We think there's some legal tenet or argument there that urgency is not required, notwithstanding that the public itself is expressed to you, and we understand that there are some needs for oversight perhaps from the local community. Summarily, the report compiled in 21 days again does not intend to establish a factual basis. We've been in business since 1971, we operate 21 retail stores and a distribution center in Southern California. We recently opened a store in Palm, or I'm sorry, in Salinas on Tuesday with City Council approval. We are going to open another store in Palmdale within the next week, also after City Council approval, okay? Each is licensed and operates under the authority of the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, and under the auspices of the California Department of Justice. The state of California, as you know, has imposed the strictest rules in the country with regards to the selling and ownership of firearms. We faithfully follow those laws as well as those mandated by federal law, both California DOJ and federal laws, some of which overlap and some of which are exclusive to those particular agencies. We undergo regular audits by both of those agencies, and we have faced no adverse action. Contrary to being an immediate public threat, we're the opposite. We participated for decades as a dealer stakeholder with California DOJ. I was up in Sacramento two weeks ago, where we spoke with DOJ staff about the upcoming ammo merchandising, sales, purchase requirements, and registration that will come up in 2019. That's the partnership we have with Cal DOJ. Our relationship with the Los Angeles Division of ATF is equally strong. We participate in training seminars with ATF, as well as the fact that we interact with them on every basis, ensuring that we are 100% compliant, offering our feedback on what they can do for us in order to make sure we maintain that compliance. We maintain strong lines of communication with ATF along other subjects. Straw sale deterrence is one of the backbones of what we do. We do not exist in this industry if we don't follow the law. We don't think morally and ethically we belong to this industry if we don't take time to share with local law enforcement or federal law enforcement if there's something that doesn't seem right to us. We value the public safety. Our employees work in these communities in which we have stores. The last thing we would do is endanger that staff or our own employees by recklessly valuing the dollar more than we would the rule of law. We've worked with ATF when requested in criminal investigations related to straw sale attempts. We have also been rewarded once or twice with comments by ATF that some of the paperwork that we require over and above the standard required federal and state paperwork has effectively allowed them to prosecute straw sale purchasers.
Mr. Ortiz, could you just define straw? Some folks may not understand what that is.
The mayor, straw purchase is when somebody comes in and looks like they are lawfully purchasing a firearm for themselves, express to our staff that that is the case. I receive an email at least once or twice a week that I pass along to either local law enforcement or to the ATF about a person who has persisted in attempting to buy a firearm on behalf of somebody else. We were rewarded by the National Shooting Sports Foundation four years ago for being their model dealer with respect to prevention of straw purchases. As noted in the California DOJ document that was in the staff report, sporting goods dealers can also turn around and administer the legally required firearm safety certificate to California gun owners. Before you buy a firearm in California, you must demonstrate that you have basic safety knowledge. Turner's Outdoorsman does that. Turner's Outdoorsman offers services to buyers along the lines of a safe handling demonstration. Again, these things are not adverse to public safety, in fact, they enhance public safety. We also sell used or second-hand firearms, consignment firearms. Without the services of a dealer, those sales might just go on without a background check. We are licensed on top of the California DOJ CFD, the Simple Firearms Dealer Listing, and the federal firearms license. We are also licensed as a second-hand dealer. We report every single firearm that comes to us. That allows California DOJ and law enforcement to ensure that that gun is not stolen, and nobody is peddling and used guns that are stolen. And again, we provide a service that is not adverse to public safety, it enhances it. Unlike in other states, people often talk about an exemption to private party sales that doesn't exist in California. All private party sales must be brokered through a firearms dealer. Because Turner's Outdoorsman is open more hours than many shops around, we actually offer, again, a service beyond what other dealers may be able to do. We understand, we all work, you know, from 6 to 5 or, you know, some combination of that, long days. You don't have time in the evening perhaps to get to a dealer that's already closed. You can come into a Turner's Outdoorsman and legally broker that sale. There's a background check done on the buyer, the gun is stored for 10 days, that gun is also checked to make sure that it's not stolen. Some of the long, the weird part of California law is that if you are a long arms firearm dealer, such as a Dix or Big Five, you do not have to handle handgun private party transfers. Turner's Outdoorsman does handle those because we do handle firearms, and we often find that it goes beyond the local area where that's a public benefit, because if we look through the peninsula, there are plenty of big box retailers that only sell long guns, they do not broker handgun private party transfers. Again, without that, we'd like to think that the public at large does the right thing, but perhaps somebody speaking with their neighbor feels comfortable enough not to go to a dealer. That is a breach of the law, and as we all know, that can also result in some unwanted consequences. Again, I'm going to repeat it, that that is a larger public service, and that is not contrary to the public interest, and it doesn't serve the statement that there's an urgency clause that opening a Turner's Outdoorsman is going to result in some adverse effect on the public at large. As described in that California DOJ document that was included in staff report, California gun purchasers are required to buy firearm safety devices. They're also required by law to keep their firearms locked up to prevent access from those who can't have them, particularly children. And even though a lot of manufacturers do include those devices with their firearms, we sell nearly $2 million a year additionally over and above that in safes, locking cabinets, and firearm safety devices. Again, our selection is larger than the big box stores, it is sometimes larger than smaller sporting goods shops, it is, again, another asset to the community. We don't go into this offering very little, that is one of the largest tenets. If you have a firearm, you must own it responsibly, locking it up and keeping access away from those who cannot possess firearms and/or children is paramount. Not described in the California DOJ document also are situations where California DOJ cannot assess somebody's eligibility completely within the 10-day waiting period. What happens in that situation is that firearm purchase will be delayed for up to 30 days. In that time, it gives California DOJ more time to properly assess somebody's eligibility. Not known by too many people, at the end of that 30-day period, Cal DOJ will look and run another check. If that check is inconclusive, California law allows the firearms dealer to release the gun without a conclusive outcome. California dealers may elect to release that gun, they may elect to hold that gun and not release it. There are no stats on how many dealers do either method. Turner's Outdoorsman does not release a gun to a customer where it is inconclusive if that person is eligible or not. We take, again, the high road, that we'd rather see public safety referred to, or at least considered. That customer can seek due process with California Department of Justice, they can seek due process with an attorney if that's needed. They can ultimately be cleared, in some cases perhaps not. Again, we defer to the latter, and we do not release that gun out of the interest of public safety. That is not something unique here for San Carlos, that has been our public policy for quite a while. Some of the comments that were shared with us had to do with physical safety and security of firearms within the firearms business. Amongst the mandates that we adhere to are the minimum required by state law in order to secure firearms. And I say we adhere to the minimum because we're California DOJ compliant. We exceed those requirements by adding steel-anchored concrete ballards in front of our stores. We do not want vehicle intrusion. We utilize a smash-proof steel storage case for displaying firearms. We have at least 32 closed-circuit TV cameras and a 24/7 alarm system, both of which can be monitored by any device. I mean iPads, we all carry iPads and telephones on us, we can view our stores at any particular point in time. That has become an important tool for us to analyze and see if we've got any situation beyond what we already do in security that we might want to address. Long guns are secured using steel cables, and firearms not secured in those display cases are secured by steel cables or stored in a limited-access safe firearms room. Of note, our physical security requirements would have met Senator Jerry Hill's SB 464, a bill that was passed this year by the Assembly and the Senate that would have raised the bar from that state DOJ minimum. There would have been minimal impact to Turner's Outdoorsman because we already had everything in place that the senator thought gun shops should have. Again, and I hate to beat that horse, but it is not adverse to public safety. When we went through the planning process, we provided the security details to planning staff and to chief office. We didn't get anything in the way of feedback relative to any other concerns or something else that they thought we should do. Being that our employees are paramount to the success of our company, we dedicate a large portion of each one of our corporate and managers' meetings to compliance training. We utilize internal, external training, including, again, NSSF, ATF, DOJ, and in some cases, local police departments if there's a specific issue that we need to address. Rob mentioned earlier that we've been in the city of Los Angeles for 40 years, there is not another gun dealer in the city of Los Angeles. We are the only gun dealer. Beyond what California law has done, the city of LA has taken steps at times to make it more difficult for people who do not comply at our level to do business in the city. We continue to do business in the city because we're ultimately compliant. While all of the Turner's employees undergo a pre-employment background screening, most of our firearm staff are DOJ-certified instructors, which means they also have a California DOJ-issued certificate of eligibility. A certificate of eligibility is a 24/7 watch on that employee. Should that person become ineligible to be around firearms or ammunition, that employee would be no longer working with us. An employee that is well-trained and well-compliant is really an asset to the community because they can prevent straw sales, they can prevent the wrong people from even seeing or handling a gun, they can give us intelligence that we can share with local law enforcement. And moreover, because we know that they are checked by DOJ, they themselves are not a problem, they are not ineligible to be around firearms. One of the things that's also unique to smaller— One of the things that's also unique to smaller sporting goods companies is that we employ up to three full-time people with one job. They work for me as a compliance gun desk. Their entire job is to review every bit of paperwork that we do to ensure that we've been 100% compliant. If we find that somebody has an issue, we reach out to that respective agency, see how we need to remedy that. And if somebody is persistent in not necessarily meeting those aims, again, that person may not be working for us anymore. We've initiated lease discussions with the building owner here in San Carlos after researching local zoning requirements, receiving emails from city staff who concurred, as was mentioned earlier by staff, that this was a legal retail use in that particular section along Industrial Road. Targeting the mid-November opening date, we also inquired the need for any other permits or processes. Again, I'm going to distinguish the difference between moratorium and some type of existing due process that might be in place. I mentioned that we had moved forward on Palmdale, and they have a very specific, well-outlined process in which we were to go through. The same thing for Salinas. That's not different for us. It wasn't discussed here upfront. It wasn't something that was in place upfront. And again, coming back to the moratorium, it doesn't establish the urgency that anything we've done to this point, anything that we've shared with staff at this point, would be adverse to you having the store open. Afterwards, we met with Mr. Seve and his staff, wherein we discussed the steps necessary to submit building plans. Again, no indication that we wouldn't be able to proceed as we planned. The suggestion was made that we meet with Chief Rothaus to review security plans, being paramount to the city, we understood, answer any other questions or concerns he might have. We did so, and as we mentioned above, the meeting was quick. There was nothing of note with regards to safety or security issues from either Chief Rothaus nor Sergeant Prettitt, who was basically, I won't say assigned to us, but was referred to us as the person who would be our main contact. We love having that contact with senior law enforcement on a local basis because it allows us to share intelligence and to get direction and give feedback with regards to public safety. Delaying the opening of a store for 45 days or a year, up to two years, will harm the building owner, Turner's Outdoorsman, the 25 employees that we would hire locally, and the city, not only in tax revenue and resident employment, but potentially in some type of settlement should the moratorium or any extension be approved. Since it's somewhat debatable if the city has established that urgency as claimed in the staff report, at this point, we've invested over $125,000 in the location. And until October 24th, the day we were told by staff to cease demolition or build out, we did so without any indication we'd be unable to pursue the store's completion. As it can be expected, a 10-year lease is valued in the seven-digit range. That is the lease we signed with everything that we saw being a green light to proceed. We would not go down that road and not be in that lease had we known that there would be something that would be changing or if we'd been told upfront that there would be some adverse obstacle to us opening the store. Additionally, the city would bear the cost of hundreds of hours needed to draft the ordinance that would address zoning and add local oversight. In California, the former has often been used obstructively. Zoning has not been necessarily around sensitive areas. It's been more to obstruct and to all but eliminate certain types of retail shops. We understand that you recently examined cannabis, or federally regulated. We understand the differences in cities setting community standards relative to what they might want to do, but there's a difference, again, in the moratorium that obstructs or zoning that obstruction process is ongoing. We've seen the latter also only places additional burden on cities trying to duplicate ATF or DOJ oversight. We love the cities that we work in. Ultimately, they often defer to us because we have more interaction with Cal DOJ and ATF. And it is very tough for them to place enough resources to do the job and duplicate what ATF and DOJ does. There are studies that some cities have done that have confirmed that there's no devaluation of property values near sporting goods firearm dealers, nor is there a direct line of causation between the same crimes committed with firearms nearby. Buffer zones have seemed to be rather, around sensitive areas have been arbitrary, ranging from 200 feet to 1,000 feet. There is no standard. And there's no standard because there's not direct causation. We understand there are sensitive areas, but it is often a struggle for a city to come with one that makes sense, that they can turn around and rationally say this is concrete and substantial, and it should be at this particular distance. To sum this moratorium, which seemed to be a localized discussion of constitutional rights versus gun control in the post Heller versus Washington DC or Chicago versus McDonald. It was noted before that there were comments in each one of those cases with regards to zoning. I differ slightly that McDonald versus Chicago actually prevented Washington DC from banning gun shops outright or using a zoned method in which there would be no gun shops. That case has been tried again in what is basically called Heller versus DC or Heller Two, and they've established the same thing.
Mr. Ortiz, you're almost done, right?
I'm going to wrap this up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. There's going to be visceral commentary citing horrific tragedy, demonizing gun owners and all firearm dealers regardless of their product mix and intentionally misusing terms such as assault weapon, high-powered, easy-to-obtain. We don't sell assault weapons, and as you can see by the document that was added to staff, it's not exactly easy to obtain a firearm in California. As we walked through the city, visited, shopped, and dined in the city, we've noticed that it is indeed a special city. Lawn signs in multiple languages reminding visitors that all are welcome resonate clearly. San Carlos is a welcoming community where prejudging has no place, where the rule of law applies, and is not manipulated in such a manner to discriminate. Commonly litigated legal tenants require that the city act with fairness and equity, yet this considered moratorium seems to be at odds with a standard that seems so well-rooted in the city. We understand the need for the public to be heard and to be informed. We feel already overcome concerns based on the compliant operational and professional personal strength within organization. We understand that you've heard and will hear citizens to not express their feelings in an emotional heartfelt and genuine manner. However, we respectfully ask that you reject the moratorium because, again, a legal basis for urgency has not been established. Doing so does not harm the city. It actually strengthens that fair, honest, and equitable local resolve that is its backbone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, very much. All right, gentlemen, questions for folks? Mr. Alpert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff and Turner representatives. I've got a series of questions here. Let me start with the ones that I think fall under the staff heading. So Jeff, I'm going to address them to you, and you can punt them to whoever you want. Were all of the necessary permits for the store or any of the necessary permits for the store granted by the city up to this point, including the demolition permit?
No, I don't believe any permits have been issued.
Just out of curiosity, is a demolition permit necessary to do demolition work?
My understanding is it is.
Interesting. The, moving sort of beyond the issuance of permits, there was reference made to substantial discussions with city staff members about the opening of the store. To your knowledge, was there any, I don't know how to describe this, unofficial, everything looks great, paperwork to follow kind of communication?
No, not that I'm aware of.
And specifically as regards the security arrangements, I know that there were discussions with Chief Rothaus about the security arrangements. Do you know if he ever signed off on it or specified what he wanted to have done in order to be able to sign off on it?
Yeah, my understanding is the review process for the tenant improvement application, including the discussions about security measures at the store, were never completed. And in fact, you know, I think one important word was used in the presentation just a moment ago, and that was requested, the staff requested that, and that's what it was. There's nothing in the code that requires the chief to sign off on anything right now.
All right, then turning to Turner, I'm not sure which of you gentlemen should respond to this. I'll leave that up to you. Several people in San Carlos had brought to my attention something which I'm just going to read two brief paragraphs here from San Diego NBC News affiliate after the San Bernardino massacre. Suspected shooter, I'm going to pronounce this wrong, Syed Rizwan Farouk bought a 9mm Smith &amp; Wesson pistol at Turner Outdoorsman's store in San Diego. Officials with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives confirmed. An acquaintance purchased another .223 caliber DPMS rifle at the same store, presumably Turner's, on Farouk's behalf. Further down, according to the ATF, Farouk also bought a Lama 9mm pistol at an Annie's Get Your Gun store, and the acquaintance got a 5.56 caliber rifle at another Turner's Outdoorsman store in Corona, California. It does say all the guns were purchased legally. I just would like to know if you have any comments on that?
I do. As I mentioned earlier, California law and federal law outlaw straw purchases made by one person on behalf of another. We detect very many attempts, and when I say very many, the net number of people attempting to buy on behalf of somebody else is relatively small. We have a longstanding policy. We work extensively, again, as I mentioned, with local law enforcement. One of those tenants is we do not discuss their requests for information or any of the cases that they may be working on. That is absolutely adverse when you have international terrorism, when you have people making straw purchases, and these cases in some respect are somewhat outstanding. We will be completely open, 100% cooperative with them. We do not discuss this with the public.
I have to admit, I don't quite understand that answer. So are you telling me basically that you're not going to comment on the story?
Absolutely.
You're not going to comment on the story?
Absolutely.
Okay, then that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Collins?
Collins? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this may be for Mr. Zubek. Real simple question, how did you come to choose us? I mean, there's 20 cities in San Mateo County. Why us? You come on up, because I've got a few others. How did we become so special?
So, to be honest, we were looking at expanding north, and like I said earlier, it's a great outdoor area. There's tons of stuff to do, and I went with our real estate agent, and we canvassed. I probably know, I know these freeways almost as good as I know the freeways in Southern California now. I've driven them so much. So if we just, this space was available for rent. It was in our price range. We do a, when we look at a space, we always take into consideration where it's at and anything that's local to it, and it fit all our criteria, and we went forward with it.
Well, I love this county too, because I lived here my entire life. But I don't know if you realize, but we have a lot of open space. 75% of the land in San Mateo County is either open space, which I believe prohibits hunting, or agriculture. You know, the other 25% is houses on it. So I don't know, you know, I understand the attractiveness of it, but I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't envision us as a hunting paradise. So I'm just, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask.
I think you'd be surprised how many of your residents actually go hunting.
I realize we have lots of hunters, and I think it's, you know, I have friends that are hunters. My other question is, you know, Mr. Ortiz mentioned the safety standards you have in place. How long have those safety standards been in place?
Every year, we're constantly upgrading, so this, these store will be the probably last five years to this standard.
Mm-hmm. Sure, of course.
The Lexan showcases that I mentioned earlier have been in place since 2001. The ballards have been in place in most of our stores. As you may understand, sometimes there's an aesthetic in cities with regards to placing those in. Sometimes cities more than welcome and will sign off quickly. In some cases, cities have been a little demonstrative in terms of their deliberation to get that in place. Locking long guns, having a safe, secure room, that has been in place for probably, I'd say, the last 15 to 17 years. As Rob mentioned, no different than with your home security within businesses within the city. If something has been overcome at some point in time, we will up the ante and take it to the next level with the best security plan we can come up with. What we've expressed tonight, while in excess of California DOJ standards, in excess of Senator Bill's Hill, or Senator Hill's bill, may actually be upped again, provided we can recognize a weakness or something we need to do stronger.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned that you don't sell assault weapons. I have to confess, I don't know what the definition of an assault weapon is, so maybe one of you could describe that to me.
Sure, I sure will. In fact, an assault weapon is whatever California law has dictated on three occasions what assault weapon is. In 1989, California legislature decided that guns with certain names were an assault weapon. They had similar function to other legal guns, but by name alone, they were considered to be assault weapons. The day they were declared assault weapons, Turner's Outdoorsman sold no guns of that nature. In 1999, the state again decided that guns with certain features, similar in operation to other firearms, but with certain features, would be considered assault weapons. California law changed, and again, Turner's Outdoorsman did not sell an assault weapon. Recently, in 2016, California law changed again, once again redefining features. The reason it's tough to assess what assault weapon is, because that doesn't, that term does not exist in normal nomenclature. If you notice, the guns that are not sold in California are sold in other states, not because they aren't assault weapons, because other states have not defined weapons based on similarity of looks or features.
Is a semi-automatic considered to be an assault weapon?
Absolutely not. There are, yeah, let me rephrase that. It's the Venn diagram. Not all rifles that are semi-automatic are assault weapons. Some semi-automatic weapons have been determined or deemed to be assault weapons, but I took your question to be, are all semi-automatics assault weapons, and they are not.
Okay. Does Turner sell semi-automatics?
We do.
Okay. Okay, so the next, the next part that I was a little puzzled about, and let me preface this with the fact that one of the reasons that we're here is really about public safety. The emails and phone calls, and by the way, I apologize to those people who left me voicemails, but my cellphone is not getting them. I got them, but it didn't ring through. Anyway, I apologize. Most of the questions are about public safety. So this is what I want to focus on, is the public safety aspect of your application. One of the things that I noticed was that, let's go back to 2001. Actually, I want to go back to Act 2007. Your Riverside store was broken into and had 20 handguns stolen.
Correct.
In June of 2007, San Bernardino store, 70 firearms stolen.
Those were actually armed robberies.
Okay.
I'm going to make a mistake.
I'm just asking, I don't know the details. I'm just, tell me what I read.
No, you've done a good web search relative to looking online.
2012, 12 rifles stolen from a Turner store in Corona.
Correct.
Okay. Two weeks later, same guys, 42 guns more stolen from your store in Torrance.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. 2013, Temecula store, an unknown number of rifles and shotguns stolen. 2016, Victorville, several firearms stolen. And this year, in May, Pasadena, two handgun vaults stolen. Now, what the article didn't say, and I'll give you the benefit of the doubts, maybe the vaults didn't have any guns in them.
Can I, since you brought that up?
Sure.
The vaults were behind a glass display to the outside. On the other side of that was a roll-down steel door. There was no incursion made to the store. A vault, as I mentioned earlier, this vault that you're speaking of, was an accessory that was put in the window. Somebody stole that. We're not saying that gun thieves were the brightest folks. They couldn't get past the other security features. All of these events that you bring up, they're valid. We have continued, as I mentioned earlier, to employ more and more obstruction to people breaking into the store. What we want for local law enforcement is to have the time to either prevent these outright or to obstruct the parties who set off the alarm for a long enough time that law enforcement has the chance to react.
Thank you. So you understand why some people might have some concerns?
I understand.
All right, okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Jeff. So this has been described as a moratorium on retail gun sales. The ordinance talks about the establishment of new retail establishments that sell guns. Can you speak to how this will affect the existing retail establishments in San Carlos and why this is applying to a new establishment?
Okay, this would not apply to any existing establishments in San Carlos. It's conceivable, should it go into place and should new regulations be put in, that some of those regulations may affect existing business, but, you know, the crystal ball isn't really working to that high a degree. So this really is about any new businesses coming into the community to allow the council the opportunity to engage with their community and look at any new regulations that would go into place, in this case, for Turner's Outdoorsman or any other application we get, you know, in the next period of time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Grokot?
Thank you. So the first questions I have are for staff. Jeff, you mentioned to Mark's question that Turner should start it on a demolition. When retail is looking to open and they're doing TI, is that that uncommon for businesses to get started on demolition without a demolition permit? And I'll just give you the next question to that. And I'll just give you the next question to that. When that is done, and if, you know, a business is found to be doing demo work without a permit, what's the, what's the penalty?
We can probably call up Al Savay or Chris Valle to, and those are, those are a little specific for me. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So typically, if we find out that someone's doing demolition without a demolition permit, we will notify the people who are doing the work to stop doing that work. Typically, there's no penalty for that. We just say, hey, stop, come in, get your demolition permit, and get set up for that.
How frequent does that happen? Would you say, you know, how many out of 10 permits do you find that to be the case?
It's very rare. You know, sometimes people are in a hurry to get things done, small retailers and such, but it's very rare that that happens.
So is it rare because they don't get caught, or is it rare because, you know, you're not aware of it? Or is it rare because you guys are following things, and you do, you know, you're very much aware of what's going on, and you don't find very often that people get ahead of the game?
It's a combination of those things, yeah.
All right, okay. Yeah, and in this case, some, I guess they had started some demolition work, and how was, how did it come about that that was discovered, that they were doing demolition work?
We had heard from someone in the community that they were doing demolition work. So it was, someone notified city staff that there was some demolition that had been done there.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to ask questions for you guys later, so yeah, in turn, you may, but if.
I actually want to ask Al a question. Is that okay?
Well, why don't we just, go ahead, Mr. Grokot? Yeah, go ahead.
So, and this is also for Jeff. Every once in a while during the year, we have three weeks between council meetings because of an extra week in a month, and we had that in October. So it's been three weeks since we had our last council meeting where we heard this issue and so forth. Has staff, I heard you say, you know, you would be hiring a specialist and so forth to look at the zoning and the extra safety precautions and so forth, but has staff come up with anything at all, in a preliminary fashion, that they would be telling us what might be some of the things that could come out of the moratorium? You know, on the, on the flip side of it, once we, once we go through the moratorium, are there things that you could see us passing and putting into place?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, council member, and something we've talked about at the staff level, but our focus has been on preparing this item for the council, and, you know, we've, you know, we've started to create, and I think we even outlined some of the questions we have at the staff level in the staff report that we would be working to answer. So, no, we don't, I really couldn't paint a picture for you right now in terms of what any potential regulations or even the regulatory landscape looks like. We know that some organizations have put, you know, various conditional uses in place for their land use process successfully. We know that some communities have attempted to put in regulations unsuccessfully that were later challenged in court, so we know that there, there are options out there, but we don't have a full understanding yet, and should the moratorium pass, that's exactly what we'll be focused on, putting together a solid answer for you and your colleagues in the community.
And then, and I think this is a fair question for you as the city manager, but it seems to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's been two times where this very body, in other words, these five council members that are here now, out of this five came a request to look at the availability of guns and so forth. Seems to me that was done on two occasions. It takes three people to get something on the agenda, and in each case, it failed to make it to the agenda.
I have the same recollection.
You have the same recollection. Okay, thank you. The questions I have then for Turner's is, I'd like to know when you started your, not when you started your search up north, because that could have been, you know, a strategic planning meeting years ago, but I'm trying to get a grasp of, you were targeting November 1st to open the store, so when had you started the process in earnest, I suppose talking to the property owner where you signed the lease?
Revolutionary discussions with the landlord go back to June, in terms of trading emails for potential size.
June of this, this year?
Here to the legislature.
Of 2017.
Yes.
Okay, and then, you were, so you were targeting November 1?
About, actually, mid-November, but.
Mid-November, okay.
Sure.
To open, so, and you mentioned that you, your capitalization so far in this project is $125,000?
Correct.
So had you, I would, I would take a lot of that to be working with an architect?
Correct.
For TI work?
Correct.
And you had almost submitted plans, or had submitted plans, or what was the status of that?
I believe we've submitted plans, because we did get feedback from staff with regards to fire, building safety. We also got requests from staff for evaluation of parking, which is a typical staff question when you're looking at retail. So I don't want to contradict what anybody said earlier, but we did meet with Mr. Savay and have a discussion that again resulted in the turnover discussion to Chief Rathaus, as well as the fact we've traded some emails back and forth relative to certain expected parameters when you go to open a store.
So, you know, I design houses for a living, so I know you go through a planning process with the kind of projects I do, and then you go, then you submit to building with building plans for construction. Can you delineate, do you know what you did so far?
Go ahead, repeat the question.
So, I don't know with your process doing a commercial TI, but with the process I do, you have, you usually do a submission to planning and start that process, and then once you get approval from planning, then you go in with actual construction drawings for a building permit. And I'm trying to delineate where you guys were in the process.
So when you submit plans, they get sent out easy, like five different departments, planning, zoning, fire, maybe that's it? And then you get comments back, so we have already received the comments back from those departments.
So these were construction drawings for TI work that you had submitted? Okay, very good. That's what I was trying to get at. And then you mentioned that you have a signed lease with the building owner. Do you, have you had any discussions with, hey, we've got this issue, and it could be anywhere from a 45-day to two-year delay? What's our penalty if we have to extricate ourselves from this contract that we've already signed with you? Has there any, been any?
No discussions on that.
Okay, but you, do you know in the language of your lease agreement, if you backed out, there'd be some penalty or something of that sort?
Well, outside of what we've already paid out?
Right.
That there is some protection for us in the lease.
Okay, very good. And then, I want to touch on something that Mark had brought up about the background checks, and you had mentioned about how much you work with Cal DOJ and ATF, and going through that background check process. And Mark brought up some cases, I guess, where there were some straw purchases, or people had fallen through the cracks. Am I to understand, though, that you're giving that information to the government? What they do with it and how efficient they are with it is up to them, not up to you?
Correct. In cases where we are getting all sorts of signals based on any number of, just experience or parameters, we will act quickly. In cases where a straw sale is nearly indetectable, because the person come in and expresses an interest in that particular firearm, can delineate what they're looking for by brand or by type, and have a discussion with staff, that sale is no different than any other sale. One of the things I mentioned earlier is that there is a form that we do, that we, again, we do, it's just a common sense, we think it's a common sense business practice, of having the customer sign what firearm he's getting, that he's received safety instruction for that firearm, the California safe handling demo, as I mentioned earlier, that they have read the instruction manual, and if they have any questions, we can ask, or we can answer those for them. We also ask them or advise them that the firearm that they're buying is for themselves and only for themselves, because state and federal law prevent otherwise. We also advise them that the firearms that they are purchasing are legal, as is sold in California, that any alteration, modification, addition, subtraction, and so forth might put them in harm's way. As I mentioned earlier, we've been notified on multiple occasions that that form has been extraordinarily effective, though not required, in terms of prostituting people who made straw purchases.
Thank you.
Mr. Robert, you had another question or two?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Actually, for Mr. Rubens. One of the other things that I've found, found it interesting to learn about in this entire discussion, as I was prepping for the meeting, is trying to get some clarity on when a business is looking to open up a retail shop in San Carlos, or indeed at any community, to what extent is the ability to do that, I guess I would describe it, I'm not trying to use legal terms here, so maybe using incorrectly, a matter of right versus a matter of privilege? In other words, to what extent is it that the community does have a say in terms of what's there and what's not?
Well, that question revolves around what really you're considering tonight. It's the moratorium, an urgency ordinance and a moratorium is, it's a zoning ordinance. And the rights under the, under the zoning law, we regulate zoning all over the city. We have residential districts, we have commercial districts, we have special overlay districts that deal with the downtown core. We have districts that allow multi-residential or mixed use. So that's core to California's system of zoning and regulation, that cities have the right to reasonably regulate the land uses in their city. There's some, you know, invasion into that right, if you will. What comes to me, to me right now is, you know, home daycares. We, the state has taken away some of our regulatory authority for home daycares. One of the things about what you're hearing tonight is how complex the issue of firearms and ammunition sales are, and the breadth of regulations at multiple levels of state and federal government. The experience that, what I've done since the council directed us to look at this is how, to what extent can we impose a moratorium? The research I found is that several local cities have done what you're proposing, what's being proposed tonight, so that we could figure out what the rules of the game are, what the limits of zoning are, what we can do. vested right, the vested right concept, or what you're talking about, generally, the rule is you have to have a permit to get a vested right. And I hear the theory that's being proposed here, that you can get a vested right before you have a permit, but that's not necessarily what the rules are. The rules are, you get a permit, you have, you've obtained the right under the zoning ordinance and under the rules for, under the building code. So that hasn't happened in this case.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Just something that Mr. Rubens said sparked another question. Greg, you said that other municipalities have imposed other moratoriums, specifically about gun stores, or?
Yes, yes.
Which ones?
The, Los Gatos and Boulder Creek and the County of Santa Cruz have all gone the route of a moratorium in the last few years. Boulder Creek was in response to an application for a fifth, quote, gun store in their community. Los Gatos was also in a similar situation. I don't have all the facts of how they, what led to it in Los Gatos, but obviously, there was a community concern about the health, safety, and effect on the vitality in their community in gun stores.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Collins, a couple more?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of last questions. I guess this is for Rob. What percentage of your store sales are firearms? I think you sent us a letter and indicated something about.
Yeah, I think you, so under 7% of the sales floor space is for firearms, under 5% by quantity.
I'm sorry, what was the second part?
Under 5%.
By quantity.
By quantity.
Not by dollars.
Could you still be profitable if you didn't sell guns? At a particular location?
Hard to be a hunting and fishing store when you don't, aren't able to hunt.
Well, aren't Bozenows, hunting implements? Just curious. Could you still be profitable?
Yeah, there's a separate season for archery in California, actually.
So the question, could you be profitable?
Archery is a very crazy business in California, in that every area is protected, their brands are protected, so you, certain areas, you can't put in certain brands. Otherwise, we would put in archery in certain areas.
Okay, I'm not sure, if you said in there about the profitability, I just didn't hear it. Or is that not something that you're willing to discuss?
Yeah, it would be impossible to be profitable without it.
Thank you. Is that all?
Okay, I had a couple, Mr. Ortiz? Thank you. Has Turner's opened stores in communities that have local land use regulations specific to conditions for firearm sales?
Yes, we have.
Okay, can you just throw one out, or a couple out?
I will mention two that I mentioned earlier, the city of Palmdale.
Okay.
And the city of Salinas.
Okay. Do you believe these regulations in other communities where you have opened locations to be fair and equitable?
Not always.
Okay, fair. Can you provide examples of the types of regulations or conditions these other communities have in place?
Sure. The equitable or the not so equitable?
Well, one, two of each, because we'll get going to the public here.
Sure, that's fine. What we consider equitable is where people want to review, obviously, what we've discussed prior with regards to having the proper permits, the proper vetting, and making sure that when we go into business and sell firearms, that we're going to turn around and do so according to law. We would look at the cities of Palmdale and cities of Salinas as being those examples. We mentioned earlier the city of Los Angeles. We have a great relationship with the city of Los Angeles, but they have created a zoning scheme or metric, if you will, that no other firearm store may open, because they've used this power to be obstructive relative to either such restrictive sensitivity buffers and/or places that are not suitable for retail, such as an industrial area or someplace of that nature.
Okay. Do you believe that the city of San Carlos community should have the opportunity to consider the same types of regulations you described?
Regulations, as I mentioned earlier, I think that is due process. A moratorium is a little bit different. If I can speak to this question too, we've said repeatedly that there's a 45-day moratorium. By the staff report, that is a one-year moratorium, essentially from the start. There will be another opportunity for you to vote for an extension in merely two weeks, not in 45 days. That will extend this to a total year.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we'd like to get going to public comment. Our city clerk has advised me there are 120 sheets here. So if I have two minutes for each of those, that would be 240 minutes, which would be four hours. I am certainly wanting to hear from everyone, but I would appreciate if folks could be succinct on their comments. I will be very restrictive on this timer, and I will cut you off, because I want to make sure everyone gets heard, but I don't want to be here till midnight. I would like to have it in two, two and a half hours, so we have some reasonless of awakeness up here, that we can make a good discussion. The other thing is, and I think I mentioned before, I appreciate the civility so far. I would hope that that would continue. You're going to hear some things from folks up here that you're going to really, really love, and you're going to hear some things that you really, really don't love. And certainly, I understand that, but let's be realistic about this, is that everyone has a right to speak, as long as they're respectful. If they're not respectful up here, I will shut them off, and if the room gets a little too, should we say, excited, I will ask for a recess. So let's make sure we're listening to what folks are saying, whether we agree or disagree, and then we can go from there. So hopefully, we'll have a good, good discussion. All right, are we ready? Okay. The first speaker I have is Danielle LaPagnan, or I apologize, LaCompania. And again, two minutes goes pretty quick, so succinctness would really help. And I will cut you off. Welcome?
Thank you. My name is Danielle, and I'm a resident of San Carlos. San Carlos has a well-stocked gun store on their website, and even says that they now carry California factory legal ARs. Incidents happen at gun stores that sell guns. There was a robbery at Emberton Smithers in 2016, during which numerous guns were stolen. In 2006, a man walked out of their store with a gun. He was asked, he asked to see and committed suicide on the sidewalk, using ammo he bought, brought with him. Turner's was geared up to open this month. As you can see, from the image to the right of the first page 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 As you can see, from the image to the right of the first page of their November Weekly Advertiser, guns are their focus, and they claim to be the NRA's number-one retail recruiter. Their proposed location is near many places children frequent. People here tonight who live in San Carlos will undoubtedly recognize the proposed location up there in the turquoise. Businesses next to freeways like 101 can become more of a target for robberies. Turner's, which has over 20 stores mostly in Southern California, has had many incidents of theft. Two of the four weapons, as you heard, were used for the San Bernardino mass shooting, were purchased at a Turner's. This photo is of the victims of that mass shooting, and it brings home the heartbreaking cost of inadequate regulations and lack of gun reform. Our gun death rate is rising. In 2013, gun homicides over 21,000, gun homicides over 11,000, accidental deaths by gun over 500. Research shows the variable that explains this is our astronomical number of guns. This slide shows the United States far outpaces other developed countries in gun ownership. Shown in blue, 88 guns per 100 people.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you. Two minutes, thank you. The next speaker we have is Rob Enson.
That's me.
All right, that's fine, Rob, go ahead.
Hi.
And let me, before you start, Rob, I should be doing this, and I've forgotten how I have these large ones. I want to have a couple people line up, so we'll be ready to go, followed by Jackie Yon, followed by Chris Wheeldryer. Go ahead, Rob.
I'm a resident of San Carlos. In this slide, the scale of these unacceptable tragedies could have been greatly reduced if rapid-fire assault weapons were not so readily available. We have to take a stand at the local level due to inadequate gun control and reform. Last week, Newsweek noted that gun deaths this year totaled 13,000. This photo of last month's Las Angeles, Las Vegas victims tell me, when you look at these faces, that someone's access to an assault rifle is more important than their lives. Mass shootings only account for 2% of the gun deaths, but it is the shootings taking place in parking lots, bars, schools, bedrooms, street corners, that are responsible for most gun deaths. States with the highest gun ownership had nine times the rate of unintentional gun deaths compared to states with the lowest gun ownership rates. If you search accidental gun deaths in California, you find an abundance of horrific incidents, teenagers killing friends or siblings, harming each other by accident. In 2013, to put this in perspective, there were 27 police officers killed by gunshot, while 82 children under four years old were killed by gun, according to the CDC and FBI statistics. Approximately 800 children were killed by gunfire in 2015. In a study published in 2017 in the Journal of Pediatrics, data from 2002 to 2014 show the number of children shot and killed per year is 1,300, when suicides by children are included. The city of San Carlos has not revisited the issue of regulations for stores selling guns in the city limits for decades. Let's do this.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your comment. Jackie Yan, followed by Chris Wheeldryer, followed by Aspen Molden.
Thanks so much, guys. I really appreciate the time you're taking to really think this through. It's really important for our community. It is time to revisit regulation. This is a public health issue. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Chris Wheeldriver-Dryer, followed by Aspen Molden, followed by Mary Ree.
These guns in our community are incredibly dangerous things to have. They are a public health problem for us. At the very least, we owe it to ourselves to take a little time to at least understand the situation as far, as much depth as we possibly can before we make any decision. I support this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Aspen Molden, followed by Mary Ree, followed by Ciara and Friday.
City council members, my name is Aspen Molden. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 11 years, and I'm a peninsula native. I am asking the city council to approve a moratorium on gun stores in San Carlos. While there are many arguments on both sides of the table, it seems to me that many people are jumping to conclusions as to why we're against a gun store in our community. This isn't about taking anyone's rights or guns away. Guns can be purchased up and down the peninsula, including from our own Imbert and Smithers in San Carlos. This is about the safety of our community, and whether or not another gun store is representative of the kind of town San Carlos is and wants to continue to be. Turner's or any other gun store will bring hundreds of net new guns into our city. Regardless of the safety measures we've heard tonight, you can go online, and as Ron said earlier, there have been multiple gun robberies from Turner's stores. If you allow more guns into San Carlos, there are more guns to steal. And as you already know, our local gun store was robbed just last year. If there's no way to prevent it, why risk it? What happened in Las Vegas and Texas can happen in San Carlos. Let's not kid ourselves, violent crimes happen in small towns more than people realize. I am a survivor of a violent crime that happened to me at eight years old, just blocks from my home in Palo Alto. I am proof it happens, and it changes you forever. More guns in our town unquestionably increase the risk of something happening. I am asking you to really think about the implications of whether another gun store means for San Carlos, and approving a moratorium, you will have proper time to do so.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Ree, followed by Ciara and Friday, followed by Kathy Baird.
Hello, I'm Dr. Mary Ree. I've lived in San Carlos for a total of nine years. I'm also a board-certified pediatrician and a fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Unfortunately, due to the nature of my job, I have seen the impact of guns on children. An example, at a play date, where a child finds a gun, tells, or responsibly tells an adult, the adult picks up the gun, and it shoots him in the abdomen. Another example that I've seen is a child who was at piano lessons, 10-year-old who was shot, and leaving him paralyzed. So we, as a medical community, and so, we have gathered 64 signatures from physicians who live in this area or who practice in this community. And we strongly support a moratorium of gun stores. It is contrary, it may be contrary to Turner's opinion, but the medical community has come in consensus against the opening of the store, and to place a moratorium, and so we can have some time to digest it, and the impact of its safety on the community. We ask the city council to consider having, whether or not having a gun store in such close proximity to businesses that cater to children is something that we should not think more of. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Ree. Ciara and Friday, followed by Kathy Baird, followed by Nilu.
Hi, my name's Erin Friday, and I support the moratorium. I'm a San Carlos resident of 11 years, and I have 45 other signatures of San Carlos residents who couldn't be here, who also support the moratorium. I'll hand these up once I finish. The council needs time to make a thoughtful decision concerning adding a third gun store to San Carlos. And it's not just any gun store. Contrary to Turner's idyllic misleading presentation, this store is not concerned with our safety. I invite you to examine Turner's website. Look under its Second Amendment tab. First, it proudly states that it's the NRA's number-one supporter. Secondly, and most importantly, in big, bold letters with a link, it urges anyone to go, anyone on their site, to take action. To take action against what? To take action against California's strict firearm safety laws. Let's talk about a couple of those laws that they oppose, that are before the California legislation. They oppose banning concealed weapons. They oppose laws that ban the possession of guns within school zones. And unbelievably, Turner's opposes California's pending law that mandates security and storage regulations related to guns. So don't be fooled, Turner's does not care about San Carlos's safety, and Turner's seeked out our town because of our lax zoning laws. We have no hunting areas in San Carlos. City council, I urge you to please take the time to digest everything that you have heard and will hear tonight, so that you can enact appropriate regulations to ensure our town's safety. We live here. They don't. Thank you.
Your time's up. May, please, 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 thank you. Folks, let's stay together here. Kathy Baird, followed by Nilu, followed by Karen Paluska.
Hi, my name is Kathy Baird, and I've lived in San Carlos for 35 years. Thank you for this opportunity to urge you to vote for the moratorium. My main concern is about the safety of the products themselves. I, too, found the number of reports about the burglaries. I'm not particularly comforted to hear that some of them were armed robberies, which I heard them say, and I would like to ask you to please vote for the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nilu, followed by Karen Paluska, followed by Lori Lowe.
Hi, my name is Nilu, and I'm a resident of San Carlos. Last week, I read the Daily Journal's article that covered the safety measures that Turner's Outdoorsman intends on having for their store. I would like to thank and acknowledge the store for implementing these extra safety measures. However, it seems to me that they are aware that current federal and state requirements are lacking. The California State Legislature has placed the bulk of the responsibility of putting these extra, but necessary, safety measurements, measures on local communities. Unfortunately, San Carlos has not yet acted where the state has failed to act. While I appreciate that Turner's Outdoorsman is going beyond the current state and federal requirements, they are not the ones that know what is best for our community, nor is the welfare of our community their primary concern. I don't really know Turner's Outdoorsman. We haven't had time to build a good, proper relationship yet. They may be a great partner, but I don't know that. What I do know is that I know and trust my own community. I would prefer that our own city attorney, city staff, community members, and city council be the ones to decide just what safety requirements would best protect our community. Please do not deny us the right to defend ourselves and establish our own safety requirements. City council, I ask that you please vote for the moratorium, so that our community can look into what is best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Karen Paluska, followed by Lori Lowe, followed by Pamela J. Holt.
Hi, I'm Karen Paluska. I'm a San Carlos resident for about 12 or 13 years now. I can't speak as eloquently as a lot of the other people have, so I must be very brief and just say that, as a person who's been a victim of burglary in San Carlos, as a person whose family's been affected by gun violence directly, having lost my sister-in-law to gun violence, I completely support the moratorium. I think a lot more thinking and conversation needs to happen before another gun store opens in San Carlos. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Lori Lowe, followed by Pamela Holt, followed by Kristin Lindberg.
Hi, council members, I'm Lori Lowe, and I live in San Carlos. I work in San Carlos, and I raise my children in San Carlos. As we've heard, Turner's has a history of armed robberies. It is next to the freeway, making it an easy target. It will put up concrete barriers to keep cars from smashing into it. This store will open next door my children learned how to swim, next door we buy Little League equipment, and near our school district office. I believe we need to take the time to think about how a new gun store would impact our community, and if this is the direction we want to go in. When my eight-year-old heard about tonight's meeting, he wrote the following, asked me to share it with you. And please note, this is in the context of the recent and horrific tragic mass shootings. And we've tried to shield them from them, but they've become, it's become increasingly difficult due to their frequency. So, and he wrote, "There's no point in guns. There's no point in war. Instead of war, you can talk things out. Guns are only for hurting. I ask that there will be no hurting in San Carlos, California, or the United States of America." So on behalf of him and my family, I ask that you support a moratorium on new gun stores and think through the consequences to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Pamela J. Holt, followed by Kristin Lindberg, followed by Colette Narenheim.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Pamela J. Holt. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 37 years. With the unprecedented growth San Carlos is experiencing now, we as citizens need to be extra vigilant, as how we want our city to grow. And for this, we need a moratorium that goes to the very core of how San Carlos conducts itself as a city of good living. This is what I want for San Carlos. I want us to seize this opportunity through a moratorium, to come together and dialogue together about how we want our city to grow, to decide what value we are creating within our community with our choice of all new additions. It is a time for all residents to have a voice, to speak their views and beliefs. It is a time, perhaps, to agree to disagree, but still come together and dialogue. It is a time for the empowerment of each citizen. Let's do this based on mutual respect. Let's not alienate ourselves from one another. It is not a time to put on our political armor. Let's find our common humanity. Unity is strong, and disunity is weak. Without a moratorium, we will be divided and weak. A shadow is what is happening in our country on the national level. Citizens will feel they had no voice in what is, without doubt, a very controversial issue. How such a controversial issue was stealthily passed through without residents' knowledge needs to be explained and discussed. Now and during our moratorium, we do not need, in my opinion, or in my opinion want, outside people coming in, imposing their personal political agenda, in an effort to influence and determine the outcome of this situation. Please ask yourselves if our community is going to be governed by ourselves or by outsiders, whom I would term local lobbyists. We have this going on in Washington. Let's have San Carlos seize this opportunity to take control of our city and be a positive example of the power of dialogue on the local level to resolve issues based on moral standards, not political ones. This is what I want for San Carlos, the city of good living. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Folks, 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 help me out here. Kristin Lindberg, followed by Colette Narenheim, followed by Rob Jenks.
Hi, my name is Kristin Lindberg. I've lived in the area for 10 years. This store would be two miles from my home in Redwood City, and I just want to, I strongly support the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Colette Narenheim, if I said that wrong, I apologize, Rob Jenks, and Allison Fox.
Hello, thank you for getting my name right, Iraq. So I have been a resident of San Carlos for 11 years. I have three young children, and I strongly oppose another gun store coming to San Carlos. I think it is much too close for the children to be exposed to. We absolutely have no hunting anywhere near here, and those lakes, those are reservoirs. So I, I definitely encourage you to oppose this gun store coming to San Carlos. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, let's keep it, keep it straight here, okay? Rob Jenks, followed by Allison Fox, followed by Erin Nafak.
Thanks a lot for taking the time to listen to us today, council members. I've been a resident of San Carlos for five years. I think it would be impossible to deny that firearms are a public safety risk and issue. The product isn't safe, and so we need time to figure out how to deal with that. So I urge you to vote for the moratorium. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Allison Fox, followed by Erin Nafak, followed by Sue Kang.
Good evening. I'm Allison Fox, and I'm a resident of San Carlos, also the mother of two children in public schools here. We've lived here for over 10 years, and I care deeply about the safety and well-being of our community. I'm here tonight to ask the council to approve a moratorium on any new gun sale operations in San Carlos. A moratorium will allow the council, city staff, and residents of San Carlos to study the impact such operations might have on our public health and safety and crime levels in and around our town. The council has conducted public meetings before approving or denying other lines of business in the city, as we've heard staff mention before, and I ask the council to do the same, and ensure there is public discussion before allowing any new gun stores in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Erin Nafak, followed... Erin Nafak, followed by Sue Kang, followed by Jonathan Chan.
My name is Erin Nafak. I'm a developmental pediatrician and a citizen of San Carlos, but I speak tonight on behalf of the entire American Academy of Pediatrics of the state of California. We are a nonprofit organization of pediatricians dedicated to the health, safety, and well-being of infants, children, adolescents, and young adults. The entire AAP of California is on board with urging your leadership in supporting a moratorium and further restrictions on gun stores in San Carlos. The AAP has a policy statement entitled "Preventing Firearm-Related Injuries to the Pediatric Population." It clearly states, and I quote, "The absence of guns from children's homes and communities is the most reliable and effective measure to prevent firearm-related injuries to children and adolescents." The other data are clear as well. Access to guns increases the number of conflict-related deaths and injuries. Access to guns in unsafe storage creates risk of serious unintentional injury and death. Firearms-related injuries are often fatal, and suicide fatality rates increase if guns are present in the home. The mission of the AAP of California is to protect and promote the health and well-being of all children and youth living in California for the reasons stated above, and also because, as Mr. Ortiz mentioned over and over again, he said that there was not a sense of urgency here. This is the second-leading cause of death in children nationwide. I believe that is a sense of urgency and a public health emergency, and I believe that criteria has been met. The AAP is fully prepared to work with the Council and the community at large to protect children and place their health, safety, and long-term well-being as a primary focus of your gun control efforts. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Sue Kang, followed by Jonathan Chan, followed by Stephanie Lai.
Well, my name is Sue. I'm a resident of San Carlos for five years. We have one four-year-old and six-year-old girls. We moved down to San Carlos to raise our family. And this morning, we were walking to school with our kids, and our four-year-old girl was keep on asking if we needed to move out of San Carlos or if we had to move out of our country because she is very scared of guns. And please fall for a moratorium in sake of our future generation here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Chan, followed by Stephanie Lai, followed by Joanne Sorrell.
Thank you, Council members. My name is Jonathan Chan. I've been a resident of San Carlos for five years. I believe that there is urgency for a moratorium, that warrants a moratorium. To me, a highly efficient, for-profit business that is supplying guns and ammos into our neighborhoods, into our community, is a, is a compelling community interest, and one in particular that they've said could stay in our community for decades as their plan. So, to me, that warrants urgency. And I also unfortunately take issue with some of their comments today or tonight, made me even more concerned and disturbed about Turner as a business. Yes, me, you know, there's, some of their comments were highly legalistic, and they were suggestive of taking legal action against our county for our process. And to me, and that strikes a question in my mind whether they are really looking out to become great partners for our community. So, which, again, to me, warrants even more reason to have a moratorium so we can actually spend some time and consider the issues. You know, we live in exceptional times when two of the, two of the, I guess, largest mass killings in America have occurred in the last two months. Unfortunately, they've been tied to a mass killing, and so for these reasons, I think it's wise for us to take some time and to really consider whether they should be in our community.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Stephanie Lai, followed by Joanne Sorrell, followed by Michelle Sorrell.
Hello, my name is Dr. Stephanie Lai. I'm a pediatrician, board-certified, and fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics for four years. I'm also a resident of San Carlos for three years. I'm here today to express my concern with the proposed new gun store in San Carlos. I do understand that guns are heavily regulated, and in an ideal world, they would only be used safely for sports and to protect us from those who want to harm us. However, we do not live in an ideal world. You have to look at how guns are actually used in our society. You and your loved ones are more likely to be injured by having a gun in your home than you are from using it to protect your family. This is a fact. For every time a gun is used in self-defense in the home, there are seven assaults or murders, 11 attempted suicides, and four accidents involving guns. As a pediatrician, I have seen this firsthand. I've taken care of a teenager who tried to kill himself by putting a shotgun in his mouth only to miss due to the kickback and severely disfigure his face. Some would say he's one of the lucky ones because he survived. I also take care of two children who are essentially now orphans because their father shot their mother in a fit of rage, so he's in prison and their mother is dead. I stand with Dr. Ree, not Dr. Nafak, who you've heard, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and over 60 community physicians and growing who believe that we cannot guarantee, until we can guarantee that guns are used only for protection, the only way to keep our children and families safe from gun violence is to keep them out of our community, and this means prohibiting new gun stores. So I hope you strongly consider this moratorium and a more permanent ban on gun stores in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joanne Sorrell, followed by Michelle Sorrell, followed by Brooke Sibley. Good evening.
My name is Joanne Sorrell. I'm a resident of San Carlos for the last 35 years. Sorry. I've worked as a realtor for San Carlos. I have worked as an after-school art teacher in San Carlos at all the schools. I'm a mother. I'm a grandmother. This is, hopefully, some good will come out of some bad. I am used to San Carlos being the city of good living. I think we had a failure in communications. We have newsletters. We have websites. On the website, we have Shape California, Inform California. We've been asked about the cannabis. We've been asked about smoking. Why were we not asked about this? I have spent all, we have, and the notice was given to the mayor and the city council a week ago, and this whole process has gone on. It is in direct opposition to how things usually happen in San Carlos. There's an economic development plan that states land use. We have a formula, locations, stores over 10, that we decide whether we want them in our city or not. A previous development manager, Mark Seawick, said, "There are lots of businesses interested in San Carlos, but there's not always opportunities for them." We said no to Apple. How come we're saying, how come we're saying yes to a firearms store, and why do we not know? Okay, so I don't have PowerPoint. This is an older girl's. But I have to show you that not only are we, not only is the location surrounded by children's play areas, there's also REI, Roadrunner Sports, Getts Sports, there's Marine, everything. We have lots of sports stores.
I'm sorry, your time is up, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I give you all of the petitions I have?
You can certainly give it to, absolutely, please. Please do that. Give it to the city clerk, and we'll make sure it's part of the record.
I have 100 petitions from owners of businesses on Laurel Street and the principal and vice-principal at Central.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle Sorrell, followed by Brooke Sibley, followed by Dirk Kinley.
Hi, City Council members. My name is Michelle Sorrell, and I'm a mother of two small children and a San Carlos resident. I'm also an ex-president of the San Carlos Youth Softball Association. I urge you to vote in support of a new gun store moratorium. Every day, 93 Americans are killed with guns. Seven children are killed with guns in the U.S. on an average day in the United States. Columbine, Virginia Tech, Aurora, Newton, Charleston, San Bernardino, Orlando, Las Vegas. I will not have San Carlos be next, or any other town on the peninsula, or in any surrounding community where someone can purchase this handgun at Turner's. Please vote in favor of a moratorium on a new gun store opening in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Brooke Sibley, followed by Dirk Kinley, followed by Jenny Waddell.
I'm Brooke Sibley. I'm a San Carlos resident. I've lived here for about five years. I'm also a former teacher from the San Mateo Foster City School District, and I would like to share with you a little bit about what it was like to be a teacher amidst all of these mass school shootings. We were trained in how to grab our students' desks and shove them up against the doors to create barricades in case there was an active shooter on campus. We were trained how to locate the best corner of the room to hide our students in case a mass shooter was peeking in through an uncovered window. We were told to instruct our students to run in a zigzag pattern on the playground if they were being shot at at recess. So, this is not the country that I think, this is, this is not what I want for San Carlos. So I am here to voice my support for a moratorium on the gun store. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dirk Kinley, followed by Jenny Waddell, followed by Danielle Van Wert.
Dirk Kinley, I am a San Carlos resident, been for the last eight years. I bring the perspective of a father of three young kids, as well as a real estate agent, commercial property owner in San Carlos also. You know, I support the moratorium, I think, on a few levels. I think it's been fairly voiced by a lot of people before me, the fears about having firearms, and specifically what I see is a high density of firearms in a small community does scare me. Kids are curious, and if you're curious too, you can also look, look out there for data. And what I've seen in terms of interesting data, Professor, Stanford Law Professor John Donahue put out a study in June, probably see that coming up, not enough time to really talk about that right here. I think that, putting that aside, on the property standpoint, even if you're not scared about guns, look at what brings people to San Carlos, and it's not guns. Property values are brought here and sustained by being a small community and a safe community. Think about the perception of, you know, the buyer coming in and looking at, you know, single-family homes and whatnot, so.
Thank you for your comments. Jenny Waddell, followed by Danielle Van Wert, followed by Laura Palmer Lohan.
Hi, my name is Jenny Waddell. I am a, been a San Carlos resident for 15 years. My husband and I are raising our three children here. I am also the director of a community-based preschool here in town, and I ask that you all vote in favor of a moratorium tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Danielle Van Wert, followed by Laura Palmer Lohan, followed by Ruth Donahue.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Van Wert. I am a 14-year resident of San Carlos, and I support the moratorium. And first of all, while I appreciate Turner's representatives being here this evening to discuss their business with us, I'd like to dispute their claim that the federal case of Heller supports their right to sell firearms in San Carlos. That statement is incorrect. Heller is no longer the controlling legal authority on the issue. As of last month, the Ninth Circuit handed down the case of Teixeira versus the County of Alameda, which specifically said that the County of Alameda could regulate gun sales in its county, and that while there's a Second Amendment right to own guns and use guns, there's no Second Amendment right to sell guns in the location of one's choosing. That aside, what you're being asked to do is pass a moratorium to consider a zoning ordinance that restricts gun sales in our community, and that is absolutely within our community's right to do so. The California Constitution recognizes that it is the community that is ultimately responsible for protecting the health and the welfare of its citizens, and to decide what types of businesses it wants here, and whether those businesses reflect the character and the values of its community. And that's what this moratorium does. We would be in good company. There are only over 25 cities and counties in the state of California that have enacted similar measures, many of them under a moratorium, and federal case law after federal case law has upheld those regulations and found them to be lawful. And the reason is that there is a real connection between public safety and the availability of guns in a community. In 2015, nearly 500 firearms were reported lost or stolen by federally licensed firearm dealers in California such as Turner's. Between 2013 and 2015, gun store burglaries spiked 28%. And sadly, and most recently, in the Journal of Public Health, there was an academic study that demonstrated a correlation between the number of firearms available in a community and significantly higher homicide rates. I could go on and on, because sadly, the social science and the, excuse me, statistical support for my position is voluminous.
I'm sorry, you're out of time, but thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Folks, 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 come on. Let's keep it straight here. Laura Palmer Lohan, followed by Ruth Donahue, followed by Susan Sway. I may have missed that one. Hi.
Hi, City Council, Mayor, staff. My name is Laura Palmer Lohan. I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I'm a mother. I respectfully stand with my neighbors and ask that you vote for a moratorium on Turner's gun store. I also am looking for peace of mind. I think it's important for us to study the impact that this will have. Some of the comments made by the representatives of Turner make me think that increased police support will be required for a retail store of this kind. My understanding is that public safety makes up half of the San Carlos budget. What I've learned recently is that with the additional retail stores and additional tax revenues coming into our community, and I asked what will happen with those revenues, tax revenues, I understand that the majority of those are going to go for public safety. So it's not as if our city can really afford additional taxes on public safety resources. And despite all of the obligations and fulfillment of the compliance that Turner's has offered us, there's one fact that they can't dispute, and that is the fact that once the sale of the gun is made, Turner's has no control over what happens with that weapon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ruth Donahue, followed by Susan, I'm sorry, Sway or Where, whatever it is, then followed by Philip Abrams.
Hi, my name is Ruth Donahue. I am a resident of San Carlos. I've lived here for 15 years. I have three children, and we frequent that area where the Turner's store is planning to open. And my concern here is that Turner has done a lot to protect their property. They're going to set up these concrete barriers to prevent, you know, people from stealing their guns. My question is, as Turner's has said, gun thieves are not the smartest. They're going to do stupid things. What is the city going to do to protect the people around it? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan, and I apologize, you'll have to say it for me, I'm sorry, followed by Philip Abrams, followed by Joan Abrams.
All right. My name is Susan Sway. You did it correctly.
Okay.
And I am a resident of San Carlos for 15 years. I am a business owner in San Carlos, and I'm a mother of two children, and I support the moratorium. And I am totally heartened to see all my friends out here who believe in the same as I do. It's really encouraging that San Carlos has shown up at this meeting to let you know how we feel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Philip Abrams, followed by Joan Abrams, followed by Jessica Zander.
City Council members, thanks for your hard work on our behalf. Appreciate it very much, and City Planner and City Attorney, thanks so much. I'm Phil Abrams. My wife Joan is here. We bought our first house in San Carlos when we were 23, and the house we're in now when we were 29. We just had my 72nd birthday last week, so my God, how old am I? But I'm a past president of the Kiwanis Club in town, past president of the, of the friends in the San Carlos Adult Community Center on various service boards. I grew up in the Baywood area of San Mateo, and that was a great place to be raised and to, to be a young person. But living in San Carlos has been even more wonderful. San Carlos has the best possible character as a city, a city one would want to raise one's family in, which we did. I owned 30 retail stores in, with our first family store in Burlingame, our second store in Stanford Shopping Center, third in Saramonte, and then our other stores after that. I know what it's like to run retail stores and understand the needs of retail organizations. I have an affinity for retail businesses. I have nothing against folks owning or purchasing guns, but as with my store locations, the most malls, Avenue Strip Centers, they were involved in the mix of businesses, as were the city planners and the city councils for all of our stores. Were very, they were very much involved in the kind of business, and that came, that came into their city. They looked at how certain retailers would affect the culture and character of their city. I would suggest that we do not need a large retailer selling guns in our city. We have a gun shop, there's a big five within five minutes of us that sells many, many guns. I believe that a large gun store will change the character of our city.
Right.
And we have our children living locally, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joan Abrams, followed by Jessica Zander, followed by Wendy Bastis.
My name is Joan Abrams. I've lived in San Carlos for 47 years, which I think makes us the oldest people here tonight. I strongly urge the council members to support the moratorium. I don't feel that Turner's is a business that will enhance the community, and I don't want it here in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jessica Zander, followed by Wendy Bastis, followed by Kelly Markson.
Hi. My name is Jessica Zander, and I've lived and worked in San Carlos for the past four years. I have two children who attend San Carlos public schools. I support the moratorium to block new gun stores from opening in San Carlos. For me, it comes down to the fact, as it's been widely documented, that more guns equal more gun violence. We have one gun store already in San Carlos. We do not need another one. I have 51 signatures of San Carlos residents who could not be here tonight to speak, but who also support the moratorium. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy Bastis, followed by Kelly Markson, followed by Leslie Duhan.
Hello. I'm Wendy. I am a 16-year resident of San Carlos. I have two kids here. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say I'm worried about the additional crime that this could bring to the community and the strain on our law enforcement, and I support the moratorium.
Thank you for your comments. Kelly Markson, followed by Leslie Duhan, followed by Mari Inez Woodson.
Hello. As a mother of two young children, I'm strongly opposed to another gun store opening in San Carlos. This new store would introduce more guns into the community, which would, without a doubt, make it less safe. More guns mean more violence, more burglaries, more suicides, more accidental deaths. This is not what we want in our community. I'm in strong favor of the moratorium, and I ask the city council to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Leslie Duhan, followed by Mari Inez Woodson, followed by Conan Low.
Hello and good evening. My name is Leslie Duhan. I'm a very happy San Carlos resident for 15 years, mother of two children, and I strongly and wholeheartedly support this moratorium. I was shocked and appalled to learn that another gun store would even be considered opening up in our city of good living. How did it get this far, and how come we didn't know? The statement from the Turner representatives stating that they're just another REI is completely false. What they didn't tell you, which is posted on their website very clearly, is that they are actively working to reverse California gun safety laws, keeping our children safe. They are actively working to make it easier and simpler to secure semi-automatic firearms. Why do we want this in our community? I don't understand. Thank you for your time and considering this moratorium.
Thank you for your comment. Mari Inez Woodson, followed by Conan Low, followed by Bill Schepler.
Hello. My name is Mari Inez Woodson. I've lived in San Carlos for eight years, and I'm raising two young daughters who attend our public schools. We cherish our community and are proud of living in the city of good living. I see no place for additional gun stores in our town, and I hope this moratorium on gun stores in San Carlos is granted. And thank you for hearing me and my fellow like-minded townspeople.
Thank you for your comments. Conan Low, followed by Bill Schepler, Sarah, and followed by Sarah Hickey. Sorry, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Conan Low. I'm a San Carlos resident. I've lived here for 11 years. I actually grew up in Cupertino, which is just south of here. And the news that a new gun store was attempting to open in same vicinity as the place where we take our kids to get their swimming lessons, we go to buy their cold buster smoothies when they're sick, brought back a wave of memories for me from an event that happened when I was in high school. This is my yearbook from 1993 at La Vista. And right back here, you can see there's a memoriam to our friend Anna. Anna was a freshman that I knew, and in February of that year, she was shot and killed by a bullet from a .44 Magnum that was fired into her forehead. It was a horrific end to an argument that she was having with her boyfriend while they were at a Super Bowl party. And even more tragic was the fact that she had obtained the weapon for him previously from her father's own gun collection. The thing that I remember most from that February, aside from the sadness and the shock of her murder, was the way that her father cried at the memorial service. His whole body shook with the tremors as he sobbed from the loss of the daughter that he had, killed by his own firearm. I remember saying to my mom that I've never seen a man that broken, and I never hope I have to see, do it again. That was a completely unnecessary death of a 16-year-old girl who was nice and sweet and had a life full of promise that was immediately cut short, and that's why I'm here. We already have two gun stores in San Carlos. We certainly don't need a third, and in my opinion, we shouldn't have one located right next to where countless families and family businesses are situated. Please vote for the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Folks, thank you. Phil Schepler, followed by Sarah Hickey, followed by Annalisa Baker.
I am a 25-year resident of San Carlos with 100% voter participation record. My wife is a San Carlos native and a bona fide pillar of our community. She's the co-founder and executive director of a vital countywide nonprofit agency. We are raising two future San Carlos voters who enthusiastically represent the city in seven different organized sports plus scouting. I have been a hunter, and I know how it feels to shoot a firearm for the purpose of sport. My family and I ask that you vote in favor of the proposed moratorium against additional gun shops in San Carlos. I've heard an overwhelming amount of discussion on why San Carlos should not add a guns and ammo superstore to its retail portfolio. My question is for our city manager and planners, why should we add a guns and ammo superstore to our retail portfolio? How is this the best value option for San Carlos residents? In my mind, responsible city management requires a clear vision that takes into consideration the unique character of a city and proactive planning, planning decisions that result in a positive impact on both quality of life and property value. Given its unique gifts, San Carlos has the luxury to pick and choose its growth partners, ensuring a progressive culture and sustainable prosperity for its citizens. So how did we get to a place where a guns and ammo superstore sets up shop a half mile down the street from where Tesla designed and assembled its first cars? This feels like a gigantic step backward. I fail to see how a guns and ammo superstore meets the needs and desires of San Carlos. Where is our vision, and where is our proactive planning? Finally, anyone who compares Salinas or Palmdale to San Carlos has a severe lack of understanding of our community and Silicon Valley in general.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, oh, come on. Sarah Hickey, followed by Annalisa Baker, followed by Suzanne Bauter or Boter, I'm not sure which.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hickey, and I have been a resident of San Carlos for the past six years. I've got two boys, five and eight, and I feel like it is my duty on behalf of my children and every other child in San Carlos to approve this moratorium. I think it was made very clear in the dialogue between all of you council members and the representatives here from Turner, that we need a lot more dialogue about this issue. I personally don't see that we need to have yet another gun store, as so many other people have eloquently said. So I won't belabor it, but I hope that you agree. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Annalisa Baker, followed by Susan Bauter, followed by Sandy Altous.
My name is Annalisa Baker. My family has owned business in San Carlos since the mid-'60s, and we own two commercial properties on Old County Road. I'm a resident of San Carlos on Belvedere for 11 years. I've raised my two children here, and I support the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Suzanne Bauter, Sandy Altous, followed by Amy Kostachak.
Suzanne Bowler.
Bowler, sorry.
That's all right. 19-year resident, raised two sons, public schools, work in San Carlos. One son, turns out, even though I'm not liking it, turns out to like hunting. He has two rifles, he lives in Colorado. I suggest Turner open a store in Colorado. There's lots of hunting land there, and there's people that will buy your guns. I am very fearful of the country we find ourselves in, and more nervous about what we are becoming, when we are not safe in our schools, listening to music, or attending church. We are not safe anywhere, perhaps even not safe in San Carlos. I urge the council to vote yes on a moratorium. Let's take some time to inform our residents of this potential neighbor, allow for input and more evaluation. I believe most residents will want to have a say and learn more. We are the city of good living, not the city of gun living.
Thank you for your comments. Sandy Altous, followed by Amy Kostachak, followed by Karen Molinari.
Hi there. I'm Sandy Altous. I've lived here most of my life. I was born, well, I wasn't born here, but I was raised here, and came back to raise our children, who are now off in college. And I just want to remind everybody, I don't even have to remind everybody, because the sense of anxiety, not only in this room, over gun violence, is very strong. And of course, in the United States, with all the shootings that have happened recently especially. So I'm just hoping that San Carlos can be a leader and say no to having this gun store in town. I also just want to say that the NRA fights tooth and nail to not lose any ground. They're not willing to give up anything in this battle to keep guns flowing freely. And I think San Carlos should be a leader and say no to that, and do what we can to keep as many guns off the street as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Amy Kostachak, followed by Karen Molinari, followed by Anke Rademacher. Rademacher. Sorry if I blew the name there.
Good evening. My name is Amy Kostachak. I am a pediatrician and a mother of two children, and an even prouder member of San Carlos. I've been a resident here for 13 years, and you guys really make me proud. I am asking you to listen to the voices of San Carlos residents, to vote yes on the moratorium on gun stores, and to ultimately prohibit future gun stores from conducting business in San Carlos. Firearms-related deaths are the third-leading cause of death among children. The American Academy of Pediatrics, as you have heard, has stated that the most effective way to prevent firearm-related injury to children is to keep guns out of homes and communities. The New York Times recently published a great meta-analysis with data showing a direct correlation between more gun ownership and more gun-related deaths across American states and cities. I am here requesting that San Carlos citizens have a say in our city's development and the safety of our community. Guns should not be sold within steps of stores that also cater to children. Bay Area residents have a wealth of options for purchasing firearms. I yelped at least 13 stores that sell guns from South San Francisco to Mountain View, and we have at least one here in San Carlos. I've heard of two tonight. Turner's promotes its firearms as sporting equipment, and claims it takes safety measures. As we've heard, history proves otherwise with robberies in other Turner's stores in Torrance, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Victorville, where multiple firearms were stolen. They weren't used for sport. Turner's was also responsible, as we heard, for selling two of the guns used in the San Bernardino mass shooting. We elected you to listen, to act on the behalf of San Carlos residents, and to keep our city safe. Please don't be bullied by this gun store or gun activists, who might not even live in the city if they've been emailing you. Please do what's best for our families. If I have one more moment, this, no.
No. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm trying to be fair to everybody here, so. Karen Molinari, followed by Anke Rademacher, followed by Joseph Stempelman.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Molinari, and I want to thank you for bringing this issue before the council, allowing for community engagement. As a native San Carlin who's raising the fourth generation of San Carlos residents in my family with my two children, we've been here a long time. I'm invested in this community. My grandfather, a decorated World War II fire pilot, taught me the love of country and the honor of public service. I spent 10 years working in state and federal government, and I'm always thrilled to see large crowds at council. This is democracy at work. As a 12-year-old, I took my first gun safety course with my father at Coyote Point. I have to say, I was quite proud of my aim and abilities. It has served me well at amusement park shooting galleries. I am not anti-gun, but tonight I speak as someone who has lost a family member to suicide by handgun. I also speak as a friend who nursed a college, a star college football player, back to life after an attempted suicide by handgun. He's now a quadriplegic, and he speaks out about handgun violence. This has touched my life. We live in a high-stress area, and are all well aware of the increase of child suicide rate. You've heard repeatedly tonight the data linking access to handguns and the increased rate of suicide. Please do not add to this increase by allowing easier access to guns within our community. We do not need a big-box gun store. Our community's been served by Embert and Smithers. I'm also concerned for our law enforcement officers, who will be the first line of defense in dealing with any increased crime resulting from this store's presence in our community. Please pass this moratorium.
Thank you for comments. Folks, 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 thank you. Anke Rademacher, Joseph Stempelman, and Susan Tatum. Anke? Is Anke here? Okay, we'll put that one aside. Joseph Stempelman, followed by Susan Tatum, followed by Hillary Whissinger.
Hi, my name is Joe Stempelman, 17-year resident and father. I think I've got two things I would add that haven't been said. So I have been in that parking lot with my children, on foot, buying arts and crafts from Home, from Office Depot, or going to Roadrunner Sports. I've driven through there for other things. There's often a Halloween store. I don't know if there would be so often if there's a gun shop there. I don't know if Office Depot has had a chance to speak up about this. And on the other side of that fence, I've been at that Jamba Juice, where I've bought dog food with my kids. And I think one of the missing phrases here, "I'm not a lawyer," is just, is that appropriate? Is what I would ask you to consider. The other thing I want to say is, I do empathize that it's tough, it's tough if a project appears to be approved, and the regulations are okay, but there's a change at the last minute. But whether they sought us out for it, or if it was a happy or unhappy coincidence, Turner, you've found a community that just isn't ready or prepared for this. Please give us more time.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Tatum, followed by Hillary Whissinger, followed by Glenn Gelenau.
Hi, I'm Susan Tatum. I've lived here for 31 years. I'm definitely supporting the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Hillary Whissinger, if I said that right, hopefully. Glenn Gelenau, followed by Lisa Mackey. Hillary? I'll put that to the side in case Hillary comes later. Glenn? You're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I know there's a lot of emotion in this room regarding this issue, and I have to say, for me, it's less of a Second Amendment issue, though I am pro-Second Amendment. It's constitutionally enshrined, it's been backed up by the Heller and McDonald decision, as mentioned earlier. But to me, this comes down to a sense of fairness. We had an applicant that came to the city, willing to put in a retail business in a properly-zoned area, got no signal from the city that this would be disallowed. He was encouraged to invest his money, entered into a lease, and has incurred debt as a result of that. And just out of fairness, I kind of feel like the city's now trying to change the rules after the game has started. It's just fundamentally not fair. It's not whether you're pro-gun or anti-gun, you know, as I said, those things have been enshrined. We took a pledge of allegiance this evening, in which it said, "The right to pursue..." We took a pledge of allegiance this evening, in which it said, "The right to pursue life, liberty, and happiness." Liberty is the freedom to engage in law-abiding activities. It's a lawful owner of a lawfully, lawful enterprise in this state and in this country. And again, I just think you're changing the rules after the game has started and I think that's just patently unfair. I also remember just a few months ago that we took a vote, or you council members took a vote, to make this a welcoming city. Are we sending the message that law-abiding citizens engaged in lawful activity aren't welcome, but illegal aliens are? You had an opportunity to bring the issue up, as was mentioned before, and entertain a gun debate. You chose not to do it. Now, after the applicants invested money, now you want to bring it up. I think if you want to go forward and have a future discussion, that's fine.
I think you're telling the truth.
But it shouldn't affect this applicant.
Thank you for your comments. Lisa Mackey, followed by Stephen Gonzalez, followed by Richard Pierce.
Thank you, council members, for listening to our community tonight. My name is Lisa Mackey. I have two young boys and I've been a resident of San Carlos for 13 years. So overwhelming evidence points to a simple fact: more guns equals more violence. Gun availability has a positive correlation with violence. The scholarly data is clear. Countries with more guns have more violence. States with more guns have more violence. Cities with more guns have more violence. The problem is not the placement of more guns into the hands of law-abiding citizens in the greater San Carlos area. It's the very likely chance that guns will make it into the hands of criminals. On December 8th, 2011, 125 iPads were stolen from the Best Buy store in San Carlos Marketplace, adjacent to the proposed firearms retail space. Why steal from this store? It's incredibly close to Highway 101, making it very easy for criminals to get away from the scene quickly. Note that the retail era for the proposed firearm store has nearly entfettered access to Highway 101 via the side exit of the parking lot onto Britton Avenue. On May 22nd, 2016, thieves smashed into the storefront of Embert &amp; Smithers and El Camino in San Carlos. The thieves were able to grab an unknown number of guns and get away undetected. The implication is obvious. The store will be a target for thieves. This appears to be a very, very poorly thought-out proposal. It does not bode well for the safety of our neighborhood to have yet another firearm store so close, and I hope you will support the moratorium.
Thank you for your comments. Stephen Gonzalez, followed by Richard Pierce, followed by Debbie McDermott.
I understand people are very afraid of firearms because they're not familiar with it, they don't have an education. Can I get everybody to turn around and look back at the police officers, please? Every one of them has a firearm, is semi-automatic, we've been here three hours, nothing bad has happened. I need to say that I grew up in San Carlos, 60s and 70s. I used to hunt here and I know we don't hunt anymore, but I still purchase items here, restaurants, and move up and down the peninsula. My education for firearm safety was from Embert &amp; Smithers and other places like Turner. I've taught maybe 60 kids over my lifetime firearm safety. I've heard parents talk about teaching their kids respect for swimming, respect for fire. I would suggest, as a parent and grandparent, we need to do the same thing for firearms, or just the mere thought of a firearm puts people in the frizzy. Or the way the law works now, a little six-year-old bites a cookie in the shape of a firearm and people go crazy. Turner's a reputable place. They work with the NRA, which is the largest education organization in this country. That's something I think we should support.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Richard Pierce, followed by Debbie McDermott, followed by Ralph Bash.
This is Richard Pierce, Ralph Bash.
All right, Mr. Pierce? Thank you. Debbie McDermott, followed by Ralph Bash, followed by Lee Solon.
Ralph Left.
Ralph Left, okay. Debbie McDermott? Debbie McDermott? Ralph Left, so we'll go there, okay. Lee Solon, followed by Chris Hunt. Let's get this thing off of here. Followed by Lisa Picorni. Picorni. Go ahead, sir.
Hi there. My name is Lee Solon. Thanks for getting my name right. My wife and I have been raising our kids in this community for the last seven years. And we're raising them in a country with a gun problem. You know, the stats, they're horrific. It's far too easy to buy a gun in America and at the federal level, our government refuses to do a thing about it, other than offer gun victims and their families their empty thoughts and prayers. Instead, they've left it to us to do what little we can to address this problem in our own communities. And that's why I'm here. If another town wants another gun store, that's up to them. I don't want one in mine. Mr. Ortiz gave a very thorough and detailed account of everything that Turner's is going to do to try and protect our community from their products: safes, concrete barriers, background checks, whatnot. You know why all that is necessary? Because guns are instruments of death. The best way to protect our community from them is to keep them out of our community. I urge you to vote for the moratorium and to prevent any new gun stores from opening in the future in San Carlos. Thank you.
For your comment. Folks, 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 let's keep it together here. Chris Hunt, Lisa Picorni, and Jordan Stockton.
Hi, my name is Chris Hunt. My wife and I have lived here for over 20 years. And more to the point, I have cousins, relatives, who live in Sandy Hook, Connecticut. It's been over two years and the town has not recovered from the tragedy. My sister-in-law was a teacher at that school. She feels the town will never recover. I encourage the council to vote for a moratorium and to ultimately prevent an assault weapons store from moving into San Carlos. For those who think it is not an assault weapons store, you can find, right now, the Ruger AR556 that was used in Sullivan Springs on the Turner.com website. There is no need to enable another assault weapons store. There is no need to enable another Sandy Hook. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lisa Picorni, followed by Jordan Stockton, followed by Rob Coehya. I'm not sure if I got that right. Lisa?
Hi, my name is Lisa Picorni. Thank you for your time. I wrote a really great speech, but everybody has covered it tonight very well. I just want to throw in my support with the wave of people's strong feelings about you saying yes on the moratorium.
Thank you for your comment. Jordan Stockton, followed by Rob Cohen, Coehya. Romaine Loprette. Mr. Stockton?
I wanted to thank the council for a lot of patience this evening, but I also wanted to speak on two items, and that was around the language we use to describe what's before us tonight. And on a couple of occasions, we have called the institution that we're discussing a sporting goods store. Well, I have to say that Roadrunner Sports and REI and GATS are sporting goods stores, but a store that takes pride in the ability to sell semi-automatic weapons late into the evening and considers that a differentiation commercially is not a sporting goods store or a store that I consider a sport at all. There's a second type of term I thought would be willing, important to discuss, and that's the spirit of this discussion. This is not a zoning issue. Zoning may be a way that we address a larger issue, and that's that people came here in the spirit of activism. As we talk about the number of deaths that happened in highly-publicized events and talk about how that is overshadowed by the 80 people per day killed by guns, we come here in a spirit of being able to do something, anything, to stop what is before us. And so I am intrigued to this council, in the spirit of doing anything they can to take these 45 days that could take under two years and do what's right to get in front of what is an epidemic in the spirit of activism.
Thank you for your comments. Rob Cohen. Romaine Loprette, followed by Hannah Dures.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rob Cohen. I'm the father of four boys who have been raised in the San Carlos public schools. I'm a resident of San Carlos for 15 years. Why do I oppose a new gun store moving into the city that we love? It decreases public safety and increases fear and anxiety. Our children don't need more people with guns. Our law enforcement doesn't need their job to be any more dangerous than it already is. It's ethically unthinkable to allow a gun store to open up in the wake of some of the worst mass shootings in our country's history, the statistics, and the backdrop of depressing public health problems we have with guns. As we've heard, the existence of a store like this invites thieves who can and will breach attempts to prevent break-ins. Again, as we've heard, the link between the opportunity to purchase firearms and the potential for violence, in particular affecting our children, is inextricable regardless of a store's compliance with laws. Contrary to Turner's claim, there should be no harm to the landlord who would be likely able to lease the building to another commercial tenant in a strong economy, and there will be no harm to employees who haven't been hired yet. This isn't about assault weapons. It's about the opportunistic sale of weapons, full stop. People can and do assault other people with them. In summary, we need time to stop, think, and assess the impact a move like this would have. Blindly moving forward is simply irresponsible. Please vote for the moratorium and consider turning Turner's away.
Thank you for your comment. Romaine Loprette, followed by Hannah Dures, followed by Rahul Mathur. Romaine Loprette, Hannah Dures, followed by Rahul Mathur, followed by Ron Pivison. Pivison, I can't, Ron, I always ruin that. Can I have to get a better name?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm a new kid on the block, three years in San Carlos, and I want to support the moratorium. And in particular, I want to note that I hope that you'll consider, you know, hopefully adopting the moratorium, but also making a special effort not to have the current gun store be kind of like an open option for the future. So at such time the current gun store moves on, that that not be like we always have one gun store or we always have two gun stores. The hope would be that we would have no gun stores in the future. So just wanted to support that. And from a marketing perspective, I just wanted to point out that if you're opening a store that sells guns and people are not supposed to buy for other people, but you're opening it right before Christmas and right at the holiday time, I just find that kind of interesting. Break-ins, yikes. That's kind of says it all. I'm a mom and I'm really worried about our kids. My son has had to intervene with multiple kids who are kidding, I'm sorry, cutting kids who he had to call 911 on someone who sent us a snap that was gonna, you know, that was actually attempting suicide. There's a lot going on for our kids. It's really hard. It's starting much younger than when we were kids. I think we really need to worry about them. I also just want to mention that on Nextdoor, we're new to town, we've been appalled by some of the racism that we've seen on there. People saying they're going to get guns because they're afraid of people of color coming to their doors. It's terrifying to us as people that are different in this town as well. We don't like to have that kind of energy in town and guns just up the ante for mistakes. I think I'm out of time, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time. Rahul Mathur. Okay. Ron? You have his, I can't say that name. Followed by Liz Min, followed by, oh, Jackie Young already spoke. Okay. Followed by David Stewart.
If it's any consolation, my wife kept her maiden name.
Okay, good. Thank you. I feel much better.
For that, for that exact reason.
Okay, two minutes, go.
So my name is Ron Pivison. I'm a San Carlos resident. I've lived here for about 4.5, four and a half years. My kids go to public school here. They participate in leagues, camps, recreations provided. We engage heavily in many of the SCAF programs. My wife has her business here. So I highlight this to say that my family and I are deeply, deeply invested in this community. And this is a family-centric community where we want, this is a place where we want to have kids to be free to run around and for parents to feel safe in letting their kids run around. So I'm highly sensitive to any initiative that would bring fear, danger, or crime to the city, and allowing more gun stores would do just that. Gun stores are prime targets for smash-and-grab thieves. We saw this with Embert &amp; Smithers and that's been highlighted. Turner's has been broken many times. And outside of Turner's, any new, any other new gun store would be a similar smash-and-grab target. Frankly, I just don't want crime, crime targets in my city. We have two gun dealers in the city. We have probably about a dozen more on the peninsula. And now we can argue that we can make gun stores more safe by installing cameras and windowless steel storefronts and metal bars and concrete barriers. Well, I don't want to be, I don't want to walk down there with my kid and, and, and my kid saying, "Daddy, why are all those other stores open and that one is locked up like a jail?" Well, that's where we keep the stuff that kills people. That's not the conversation I want to have. I think some of the, some of the visitors to our city, who may be some of the NRA guests to this city, I, my understanding is actually, they might have stopped by Bianchini's to grab some sandwiches.
About 20 seconds, go ahead.
Prior to this? Well, that was actually, that was going to be a dollar store before the community stepped in and stopped that and turned that into Bianchini's. So I'm imagining that their experience would have been so much lesser had we actually let that become a dollar store. So.
Your time is up, Ron. Thank you for your comments, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Liz Min, followed by David Stewart, followed by Christine Inojosa Kirshenbaum.
Good evening. I will be very brief, I promise. I am very, very active and member of this community. I work here, I live here, I'm raising children here, and I believe in San Carlos. I think it's extremely disingenuous that Turner's is reporting themselves to be sports and outdoors. It is really clear that their main business is selling guns, and they said tonight that it is their main source of income. So I think it's really clear. I don't think it's a good fit for San Carlos, and I urge you to impose the moratorium. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. David Stewart, followed by Christina Inojosa Kirshenbaum. Mr. Stewart? All right. Christina?
I'm Kristin Inojosa Kirshenbaum, and I'm a resident of San Carlos and a mother of three here. I had a speech and then I found out that Turner sold the guns that were at San Bernardino. And that happened at the Golden Gate Regional Center, which is the agency that serves my daughter here in this area. And after that happened, it was terrifying for us and for all the people who serve my daughter here. So obviously, I'm for the moratorium against the new store opening, but I also have to thank Turner because I really think that they have poked the bear here. And San Carlos was a sleepy town, but you know what? We're real woke now and we're not going to sleep anytime soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Matt Michaels, followed by Steve Kwan, followed by Melissa Damon. Mr. Michaels?
Thank you for hearing me this evening. My family moved here in 1957. I've lived here for 50 years. I went to White Oaks, I went to Central, I went to San Carlos High School when it was here. Now I'm going to have to get out my glasses, excuse me. I retired, but I'm doing work for the Open Space Trust, Rebuilding Together. I even helped Ben Elliott, one of the fellows who got his Eagle Scout Award tonight, with the project that got him there. And to say that this is a complicated and emotionally-charged issue is way understatement. I learned to shoot a 22-caliber rifle at Carmel YMCA, not too far from here. I was also the victim of a home invasion, not too far from here. The difference in that home invasion would have had something to do with the firearm I didn't have. But my son was threatened at that time, and fortunately, it all worked out, but it was a very difficult experience for all of us. For a variety of reasons, I didn't have a firearm at that time. However, I am a life member of the NRA. I'm an NRA certified rifle, pistol, shotgun, firearm safety, and the home instructor, a range safety officer, a Level 1 sporting class instructor, and I'm also a certified hunter safety instructor. I've had hundreds of hours in formal firearm training and provided thousands of hours of training to others. Considering all this, I've found the most dangerous thing around any firearm is ignorance. Ignorance brings fear, breeds fear, and in the context of abandoning our tradition around legal firearm ownership, the combination of ignorance and fear makes otherwise good people, really good people, race to abandon the big piece of our cultural history and more importantly, its future. Banning guns or forbidding their sale will not stop bad people any more than banning pressure cookers, knives, or high-capac pressure cookers, knives, or high-capacity fully automatic rented delivery vehicles. Denying a business its right to legally sell firearms to legitimately qualified, law-abiding citizens would be equally as ineffective.
Mr. Michaels, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, though. Steve Kwan, followed by Melissa Damon, followed by John Citizen Number Seven.
I wish to express my opinion in that I think the moratorium should not be passed. It seems like Turner's has already gone through a lot of hoops in order to go in compliance with the law, and I feel that San Carlos is moving the goalposts for them to discourage them from opening up their store. I don't think that the store would be a target for thieves any more than a bank would be a target for bank robbers. I mean, so what are we going to do, not open banks because, you know, and might get robbed? Also, you know, as far as the tragedies go, one of the last three tragedies was somebody running a truck at Home Depot and ramming into a bunch of people in New York City. But nobody talks about, well, maybe we ought to get some regulation for all of our hardware stores so that they don't rent trucks because they could be potentially used to kill people. So again, I urge you not to vote for the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Melissa Damon, followed by John Citizen Number Seven, followed by Judith Selvage.
Hi, I'm Melissa Damon. I'm a 17-year resident of San Carlos. I love living here. I'm raising an elementary school-aged child. So many people have already made these points, but I think in summary, in the last few weeks and years, we've had numerous horrible things happen with people being injured and killed by guns. And we know that a leading factor in our country with this problem is how many guns are available. And right now, the five of you can actually do something positive to maybe make a difference. Maybe we won't ever know about it, but at least we could have done, maybe be on the right side of history. So I really encourage you to, to hold the moratorium, and then in the future, something else to maybe stop selling guns in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Citizen Number Seven. Judith Selvage, followed by Dan Catania.
I'm Judith Selvage. I don't know where John Citizen went, but I'm joining the minority now, so we're up to six people, I guess, saying that Turner seems to be a well-run company. They have a lot of safety features in, in place. If there's not a demand for their products here in San Carlos, they'll have to go out of business or move along. As we know, I know a number of San Carlos citizens with guns, and they take very good care of them to make sure that they're not available to children. And so I urge anyone who is very concerned about their children getting guns to make sure you protect the guns you have at home if you have them.
Is that, are you finished?
That's it, yes. And I think, I think it's, I agree that, I'm, I'm guessing you're going to vote for the moratorium because of all the voices you've heard, but I think it's, it is unfair to this company that's come and it seems to be well-run and is working through this process.
All right, thank you for your comments. Dan Catania, followed by Bernadette Gates, followed by Maeve Knoth. I might have missed that one, too. Dan Catania? Not here. Bernadette Gates? Bernadette Gates? Okay. Followed by Maeve Knoth, followed by Kevin Storm. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bernadette Gates, and on behalf of myself, as well as my husband, Reverend Alan Gates, who cannot be here tonight, we would like to encourage the city council to vote to approve the moratorium on new gun stores in San Carlos. There have been many passionate arguments tonight about gun violence. As a healthcare professional at a Level One Trauma Center in San Francisco, I encounter the destructive power of guns and the patients being cared for almost every day. My husband, as a minister, has assisted women in abusive relationships, secure legal protective orders against armed and violent spouses. We could add our stories to many more, including the mass shootings around the country. Please vote in support of the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kevin's, pardon me, Maeve Knoth? I'm sorry? Did I say that right?
No.
Okay, well, what is it? What is it?
It's Knoth. It rhymes with both.
No, sorry.
That's fine.
I could have said Knoth, but I blew that one, too. Sorry.
So I, too, urge the council to enact the moratorium. With a proposed gun store in such an easy-on, easy-off location from 101, San Carlos could well become the headline, the source of a gun used in yet another massacre. I don't want that to be where I live. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Kevin Storm, followed by Ann and Gabby Lou, followed by Rebecca Dotson.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak. I'd like to point out a few things that I've heard in this room. I've heard a lot of physicians today talk about the number two or the number three cause of death. What's the number one cause of death? Motor vehicles. How many of you will get cancer from the carcinogens dumped out of your vehicles? I'm a former paramedic. I picked up more kids who died because their parents couldn't put them in a car seat properly than ever got shot by a firearm. Are we having an urgent moratorium on motor vehicles? Go to high school. How do those kids die? You talk about death. Those kids stepped in front of a train. If somebody's really intending on killing themselves, they'll do it. Doesn't matter if it's a firearm, a train, a car, or jump off a cliff. Happens every day. Don't fool yourselves. It's a legitimate business, constitutionally protected, and you're in fear. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry, Mr. Ober, Mark? I didn't hear what you said, so I'm sorry. Okay. Next speaker, Ann and Gabby Lou are one of the, one of the two, followed by Rebecca Dotson, followed by Ashder Mather. Ann or Gabby Lou? Okay. Rebecca Dotson? Ashco Mather? Yes, sir? Come on up. You can come to center. It's all right. You can walk to center.
Thank you. My name is Ashok Mathur, a longtime resident of San Carlos. By now, it should become fairly obvious to you as council members that the overwhelming sentiment is in favor of not having this organization in our city. And I think the only way to go is to declare a moratorium and work towards making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael James? You already spoke, though.
I said, "I know," I spoke.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I apologize. I knew I'd seen the name somewhere before. I apologize. Come on up. Sure. Followed by Katie Spinnick, or Spink, Spink, Father, I'm sorry. Followed by Jean Ruski-Fage. Go ahead.
Hello. So I'm also a resident of San Carlos, and I think we sort of feel we, we just don't want another gun store in the city. And I guess the respondents of the moratorium have, have talked about how every other level of government has imposed some regulations against them and would like us to believe that it's sufficient. But I think the obligation is most on us at the local level to review what's happening. And if the, the people of the city don't want the gun store, I'd look to the council to make it, make that so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Katie Spinnick, followed by Jean Ruski-Fage, your F-E-I-G-E. Okay. Put those off to the side. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that, I'm?
I'm Gina.
Gina?
I'm sorry.
Gina Ruski-Fage? Sorry. Gina, sorry, Gina. I got the middle one right, didn't I, Ruski? Sorry.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I am a long time, I grew up in San Carlos. My grandparents lived on Cedar. I still own a house there. I have worked in San Carlos for 18 years. I'm a mom of two boys, and I'm a gun shop owner. I own Inberton Smithers. I love this community. I care about my community. I don't choose to have robberies happen. I've actually updated my security quite a bit. I, I want to stay. I want to stay in this community, and I want to try to help my community learn and understand and be educated. I am here if people want to learn more. I am leaving my door open, during the day, of course, to answer people's questions. I am happy to help this community understand my business and the firearms industry. I will be happy to answer anybody's questions. Please feel free to ask me. I do care, and I do love this community, and I love being part of it. I have fond memories of growing up here. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comment. Patrick is all I have. Sir, Patrick, please come up, followed by Alex Lear, followed by Dr. Sean McKelley.
More of this than my bias is clear.
Okay.
First off, my concern is about equal protection under the Constitution that's guaranteed. Number two, 35,000 deaths every year due to motor vehicle accidents. That is more than firearms-related deaths, which also includes suicides. One to two million people injured every year due to cars. Let's see here, what else? The New York Times article that was cited earlier is a little bit misleading. If you, if you look at the, the same author who did that study that was quoted in the New York Times, one of the main contributors to mass violence and mass shooters was media coverage, but we're not talking about that. The NRA is one of the top providers of gun safety instruction in this country. There are safeguarders of our Second Amendment rights, and I, you may disagree with them, but they do good work. I encourage you to make data-driven decisions. I spoke with Mr. Johnson the other day and encouraged him to do that. I think this harkens back to some of the zoning laws that were used to keep people of different skin colors out of communities. If you look at how that happened earlier this, last century, that was how it happened. The data do not support increased crime surrounding gun stores, and I would encourage all of you, if you're looking to ban a gun store, if you're looking to ban guns, I know lots of you are pro-gun, or anti-gun, look at the data. Go read. Turn your television off and go read. Go into a gun store and ask questions. Ask me. I'll talk.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Alex Lear, followed by Dr. Sean McKelley, followed by Greg Sorrell.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Sler. I'm a local resident and also a father of four kids who went to St. Charles, Carlmont, own a business here on Laurel Street, love the community. And first of all, one of the things I love about the community is the fact that we, we have such a base of education. The only concern that I have is that when we get into the conversation of guns, it becomes a conversation not about education. Lots of times, it's about ignorance and just fear of not knowing. So to that point is, number one, we'll never be able to regulate evil, unfortunately. People will find a way to do harm if they choose, and unfortunately, that's just part of our society. Doesn't matter how they do it, they'll figure out a way if they really want to have that happen. My only goal in this is, I want to make sure that Turner's obviously didn't do their homework in checking into this community. I am a hunter. My kids, my four kids.
If you can speak outside, that'd be great.
My, my four kids have been raised hunting in this area. You hunt in San Francisco Bay. You can hunt right out of Redwood City Harbor. We hunt there all the time. We own a ranch right behind Mount Hamilton. We hunt all over. The realities are, it's a beautiful sport. There's a sport in hunting and shooting and firearm sports. With education, my kids have been raised around guns, and safety is utmost, of, of the utmost importance. So we don't want to see anybody get hurt. I understand the conversation tonight isn't about gun control, it's about whether there's a moratorium. If the process has not been followed for them to have their, to obtain their permits, then at that point, there may need to be a moratorium to explore it further. But let's make sure we have the conversation based on education, and educated decisions are made, not just around the hysteria. That's all I ask.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Dr. Sean McKelley. Greg Sorrell. Tricia Chang. Sheila Brar, B-R-A-R. Lauren P. McCumber? I'm sorry. McCombs, I am sorry, McCombs. No, that's all right. I can't write either. Followed by Nia Grohl.
Good evening. My name is Lauren McCombs. I have been a resident of San Carlos for 27 years. I have raised two children here. I'm a deacon at the Church of the Epiphany, and I would like to say this. We have a city which is recognized as a city of good living. I want us to continue that. I want it to be a safe place where children can walk and play and laugh and not be concerned about guns in their schools, guns in the movie theaters, guns which are accessible in a manner which I do not think we want to be known for. We want to be known as a good city, who cares for its citizens? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nia Grohl? Gittle, Gittle, I'm sorry. Followed by Zoe Crowder, followed by Millian Nightengale.
My name is Tricia Chang. Sorry, I didn't walk fast enough.
Oh, that's okay.
But San Carlos is home to me and my family, and I lost a high school classmate in the Las Vegas shooting, and my nieces and nephews go through gun drills in preschool. It's sad, and we don't want our community to provide access to more guns than we already do. Please support the moratorium.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Nia Grohl or Gittle? Okay, thank you. Zoe Crowder, followed by Millian Nightengale? Zoe Crowder? Millian Nightengale? Okay. Kelly Lawrence, followed by Julie Leach, followed by Thomas Heston. Sorry, Kelly Lawrence, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a 13-year resident of San Carlos, actually 14 years, and I just say I really support the moratorium for the gunman. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Julie Leach, followed by Thomas Heston?
Hi, Julie Leach. I moved here 60 years ago with my parents. I was obviously very small, but I never thought I'd be even talking about the debate of, of, of automatic guns in this city. It just makes me sad. My father was a hunter. He hunted, he was a duck hunter, and we ate the ducks, and it was all well and good. But the idea of some of the types of guns that they want to sell, I just don't think is appropriate for this city, and I hope you uphold the moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Thomas Haxton, I'm sorry, I blew it the first three times, followed by Linda Rossick, followed by Norma.
Hi, I'm Tom Haxton. I live about a mile, I live in San Carlos, about a mile from the proposed site, and my five-year-old and one-year-old go to King's Home Academy, which I understand share a parking lot with the gun, with the gun shop. A lot of people have mentioned about the, the gun death epidemic we have in our country. One way to think about that is that over the course of our lives, each of us has a 1 in 120 chance of being killed by guns, and if the federal government continues to do nothing to stop this epidemic, then I think it's the moral obligation of us through our states and cities to do everything we can to stop it. We don't have to look far to see ways that localities are doing this. The city of San Francisco put in a law that you have to videotape every gun sale, and my understanding is that after the law went in, the last gun shop in San Francisco shut down. So I think San Carlos should explore what ways it can do to stop new gun shops reopening, or if that's not possible, put in the strongest possible regulations to keep us safe and to do that to the fullest possible extent during that moratorium. Thanks.
That's your comment. Linda Rossick, followed by Norma, followed by Mark Maxwell.
Hi, my name is Linda Rossick, and I am a mother of two, and I've lived in San Carlos over 20 years. And I think so many of us have been affected by gun violence. In 1988, my cousin Helen moved back to the Bay Area and started a new job at a company called ESL. She'd only been there a couple of weeks when Richard Farley came, walked She'd only been there a couple of weeks when Richard Farley came, walked into ESL and shot seven people, including my cousin, who had two children at the time. So the idea of another gun store opening in San Carlos is, it just makes me angry. And I also think that we can't compare the danger of driving motor vehicles to guns because guns were made purely for killing. And motor vehicles are not made for killing, although we have, there are a lot of accidents. They're not primarily made for that reason. So I don't really personally think that's a valid argument. So I strongly support a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Norma, followed by Mark Maxwell, followed by Natalie Schlaflman.
Good evening. My name is Norma Blatt and I've been a resident of San Carlos for 17 years. I am a mom and love being a mom. I would like to encourage the council to vote in favor of the ordinance to review zoning, the public peace, health, welfare, and safety with regards to a new retail firearm establishment. In general, I oppose weapons dealings in San Carlos. I believe that keeping the public, our police force, the fire departments, schools, and hospitals safe, we should curtail arms sale in our city. We are not at war. This is peacetime. So let's keep the peace in the city of good living. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Maxwell, followed by Natalie Schlaflman, followed by Nicole Reynolds.
My name is Mark Maxwell. I've been a resident of San Carlos for a decade. I have three sons. I grew up in a family of outdoor sports enthusiasts. I have family members who are law-abiding gun owners and even a family member who, this may come as a surprise to Turner's, but who is a very successful bow hunter. I also currently serve as the committee chairman for Troop 321, Boy Scout Troop 321. Earlier this evening, you were kind enough to recognize three of our recent Eagle Scouts. I would like to share briefly the Boy Scouts policy towards shooting sports, as that was mentioned and referenced earlier tonight. So I'm speaking not on behalf of Boy Scouts, but just to educate. Boy Scouts of America has a shooting sports program. As an adult leader, I am responsible for facilitating part of that. Boy Scouts allow shooting sports with single-shot rifles, bolt-action rifles that do not have large magazines, meaning you cannot load several rounds into the chamber or into the gun at a time. Additionally, Boy Scouts does not have a handgun program. They do have a shotgun program, all around safety and around the concept of sport. Boy Scouts of America also has a policy prohibiting laser tag and paintball activities with the understanding that they don't want things that frankly target, that are encouraging humans to target other humans. I go back to this, or I mention all of this because I think Boy Scouts has actually adopted fairly common sense proposal for gun and shooting sports. I encourage Turner to possibly explore the same. If they were not selling, or if they were selling single shotguns, maybe we would have a different perspective on welcoming them to our community. I'm out of time, but I would encourage you to support the moratorium.
Thank you for your comments. Natalie Schlaflman, followed by Nicole Reynolds, followed by Jennifer Rudy. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Natalie Schlaflman and my family and I have lived in San Carlos for a little bit over five years. And I just echo all the sentiments, all the arguments made by my community members, my neighbors, my friends, and urge you to support the moratorium. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Nicole Reynolds, followed by Jennifer Rudy.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Rudy. I've been a resident of San Carlos for nine years. I am a family member of relatives killed by legally obtained handguns that have resulted in deaths caused by an accident, murder, and suicide. I am the mother of three young children in this community who are five, nine, and 12. And in addition to fire drills and earthquake drills, are now participating in lockdown drills. I will ask you to reflect on whether you did that as a child. I am also the holder of a master's degree in public health, where alongside things like communicable diseases, heart disease, and other types of diseases, I had to learn about handgun violence as a public health issue. I ask you to think about other countries in this world and why we are the country that is learning those issues in relation to public health compared to the rest of our world. One of the things that we can do to deal with that issue in public health is to work on systemic change. You as city council members are in the unique position to vote on a moratorium that could start that process here. Your constituents have spoken. Please vote yes on the moratorium.
Thank you for your comments. Andrea Maxwell, followed by Mary Ann Jett, followed by Michelle Chang.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Maxwell and I've been a resident with my husband of San Carlos for the last 10 years, where we've been raising our three young boys. I think one of the things that resonated with me this evening is when the woman from the school spoke and she talked about having to have kids be prepared for this type of incident in a school. I remember growing up in the state of California and we had earthquake preparedness drills. I think my greatest fear as a parent is turning on the news, surfing the web, hearing an alert about some incident happening at a school on the peninsula. I urge you strongly to vote in support of the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mary Ann Jett. Michelle Chang. Nick Clay Jackson Colachi. Followed by Seth Cassini, followed by Dave Truslow. Thank you. Sorry. Nick Clay.
Yeah, my name is Nikki Jackson Colaso.
Thank you, sorry.
No, that's okay. I didn't take my husband's name, so that explains me. I'm actually a resident of Menlo Park and I'm here to, A, support the citizens of San Carlo in communicating their support of the moratorium and also just say that I do believe this affects people in surrounding communities as well. My husband and I have two small boys who are five and seven, and this issue is deeply personal for us. My husband lost his 15-year-old brother to gun violence. When he was 15, he was shot six times in the head while mowing his lawn in a safe area where no one would have expected this kind of stuff to happen. So this is real. And I also just want to say that the reason that we're not talking about vehicles is when you look around the world, every country has vehicles and fairly similar rates of vehicular manslaughter and other types of vehicle-related deaths. What they don't have are the high numbers of gun deaths per year. And that's directly because of the number of handguns available in this country in particular. So I do think that we are not speaking out of fear. I see a lot of really informed citizens and hope that you listen to our voice when we say that we are in favor of the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seth Cassini, followed by Dave Truslow, followed by Mary Fryer. Seth Cassini. Dave Truslow. Welcome.
Thank you. Making the right decision is often difficult, and especially when there's strong public opinion against it. I know that three of you have MBAs and two of you, I believe, are business owners. And I have an MBA as well. So I thought it'd be interesting to approach this from that standpoint. And that is, what happens? What is the, where's the risk analysis? I didn't find one actually in the staff report. But that would include, of course, litigation costs. As you probably know, Daly City, despite what was said about the Ninth Circuit, lost their zoning decision. It was a double loss. The store owner ended up moving to Walnut Creek, so they had to pay the legal expenses in addition to losing the revenue from the store. I don't know what Turner's income is per store. I tended to benchmark that by using a publicly traded company. I'm estimating that their store revenue is somewhere around 20 to 25 million per store. Given the tax implications for San Carlos, you know, that would represent about $375,000 per year in tax revenue. Do you want that to go away? Now, if you delay it--
Folks, 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 everybody's got an opinion here. Please, thank you. You've been great so far. Keep it up. Go ahead, Mr.
If you want to delay it, I'm estimating that's going to cost roughly $1,000 a day, a little over that. So by, you know, 45-day moratorium would translate into at least another 60 days and probably longer. So I'm looking at a minimum of $65,000. You know, we can play with the numbers, but it has a significant financial impact. Lastly, I'd like to speak about a tremendous amount of misinformation. I know that people are well motivated and thoughtful, but I have just heard incredible amount of misinformation. And like one of the other speakers, I would urge you to do your research. So again, I also take issue, in addition to the no-direct fiscal impact that the study claims, there obviously is a fiscal impact, there also is the impact, as I mentioned, of the delay. But also, there's also defensive gun use. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, sir. All right, Mary Fryer. Claire Senhenga? I'm sorry, I probably butchered that one. Sorry. Followed by Lauren Zortis.
Hello, my name is Claire Senhenga. I actually live in San Francisco, but I'm here to honor my son Camilo, who worked in the South Bay as an EMT for FALC ambulances. I have his jacket on, the big red ambulances you see down here in the South Bay. He may have transported some of you. In 2014, he completed his paramedic training and he may have saved some of the lives down here in the South Bay. But he was killed in a random shooting the week after he completed his paramedic training. I now belong to a group of moms and survivors who are speaking up and speaking up to the NRA. You don't think it's going to happen to you until it does. On this council, those of you who are on this council will leave your job one day and you'll reflect on if you made your community a better place or a worse place. By supporting the moratorium and really not allowing another gun shop, you may, you will have prevented maybe another mother from being in my place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Folks, thank you. Lauren Zorfas, followed by Julie Lenden, followed by Angela Holize.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Zorfas. I am a resident of San Carlos. I've lived here for 13 years and I'm raising my 15-year-old son here. This is my first time at a city council meeting. I can't imagine that you normally have 120 people speaking, but that lets you know how important this issue is to this community. And I am just, I'm stunned, awed, and so proud to be part of a community with such eloquent speakers. And I can't add anything more to the reasons why I support the moratorium than all those who have spoken before me. But I can add some more statistics because I quickly Googled, what is, what are the gun-related deaths in our country right now? And the Associated Press had an article just 11 days ago that states that roughly, I'm sorry, the US rate for gun deaths has increased for the second straight year following 15 years of no real change. Roughly two-thirds of gun deaths are suicides and those have been increasing for about 10 years. Overall, there were more than 38,000 gun deaths last year, according to the CDC, and that's up from 36,000 in 2015. This is clearly a problem in our country. In San Mateo County, I don't know if the council is aware, we have a wonderful special program with the sheriff's office where they confiscate firearms from those who have been prohibited because they've been the subject of a domestic violence restraining order. In January and February of this year alone, 37 guns were confiscated. I think we need to have a longer conversation. More work needs to be done, more dialogue needs to be done, more research needs to be done about what kind of an impact this will have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Julie Lenden. Angela Holize. Joanne Wong. Oh, Joanne Wong, thank you. Followed by Rich Pontempi. Welcome.
I wanted to first thank everyone for staying so late. I was taking a cat nap outside, but I think that's hard for all of you to do that. So thank you.
Don't tip us.
My name is Joanne Wong and I have been a resident of San Carlos for almost 13 years. My family and I live in this community and we love this community, have been very involved with the schools and with the community's support. I do not feel that San Carlos benefits from having a second gun store in our community. It is not necessary and highly questionable place where the gun retailer with such close proximity to stores and businesses such as King Swim Academy that serves families and many young children would be located. In addition to all the things that people spoke about this evening, I just wanted to share some additional information that I found in my own research. According to 2016 data, San Carlos population is fewer than 30,000 residents. Our neighboring cities have double or even triple our town's population and they have only one gun retailer in their community. Consider this, San Mateo's population of over 100,000 people has one gun retailer. Redwood City's population of over 85,000 residents has one gun retailer. San Bruno's population of over 42,000 people has one gun retailer. And my hometown of South San Francisco, over 65,000 residents, one gun retailer. It makes absolutely no sense for a community of our size to have two gun retailers within such close proximity of each other in our same town. Thank you so much for your consideration of everything spoken this evening. I respectfully request that you, as our San Carlos City Council, vote to place a moratorium on this issue.
Thank you for your comments. Rich Pontempi, followed by Amanda Tatro, followed by Susan Ackberly. Welcome.
Welcome. Greetings. Rich Pontempi is my name. I'm here to probably refute most of the stuff that's been going on tonight. I'm against the ban. I think you should stick with the plan that you did and not change your mind in mid-course and reevaluate it. It's a sporting goods store and the Second Amendment is for all of us, whether there's a gun store here or not. Somebody can buy a gun, everybody in the city could own a gun if they wanted to, if they passed the exams and so on. There's no reason to throw them under the bus. There's also been a lot of fake news stories tonight from the other side. Facts, people not knowing what an automatic weapon is. They don't sell automatic weapons. I mean, there's a lot of phony info coming out here. So I appeal to you to stay the course and don't listen to fake stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Amanda Tatro, followed by Susan Ackberly, followed by Frederick Oy.
Hi, good evening. Amanda Tatro. I've lived in San Carlos for six years. I'm raising a 10-year-old and a six-year-old who are students in San Carlos schools. I'd really urge you to support the moratorium. We're frequenters of that area. In fact, we'll be there Friday night for swimming lessons. We have friends who own businesses there who've already received phone calls from other residents who are afraid to shop there if this business opens. And while you've heard a business owner who's prospectively looking at coming here and who I, frankly, as a businessperson myself, can't believe that they didn't do their research and understand that we've had a lapse in looking at our rules as respect to gun businesses for years, I can't believe that they didn't opportunistically look at that. I would ask you to think about not only the voices you've heard today of the parents, the families, the community representatives, the people who have elected you and may continue to, but that you also think about the businesses that are over there now and that you continue to support the businesses that do exist in our community now. So I urge you to vote for this moratorium and to really listen to what we've had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Have about seven more. Susan Ackberly, followed by Frederick Oy, followed by Karen Porter.
Hi, I'm Susan Ackberry and I--
Hi, I'm Susan Ackberly, and I thank you all for this opportunity to speak. I don't have fake news. I have statistics that is from the Center for Disease Control. I think that is about as accurate as can get. But one last to throw out there, and this is that in 2015, California had, this is about gun violence rate, it's 7.7 deaths per 100,000. So if you look at our population in our lovely town of about 29,000, that equates to about 2.6 gun deaths per year. I don't hear about gun deaths in this town, and I don't think that someone who is shooting for sport is going to put any of us at risk. I grew up with guns in my house. My father was a duck hunter, but this is a totally different level of gun ownership than someone who's using an assault rifle to hurt little children on a playground. We all remember Sandy Hook. My kids went to a Rundle. When Sandy Hook happened, then Craig Baker, the superintendent, went around to all the schools and reassured the parents, hell, don't worry, because all of our schools are open, there's no security, whether it's a Rundle, Terre Linda, Central, or even Carlmont. These schools are wide open, and all it takes is one crazy person to get a hold of a gun. I'm not talking about the sports shooters in the house here. But it's about controlling what you can control. We can't control the Second Amendment, but what you can control, City Council, is who comes into our city and the selling of guns. We can potentially get a gun into the hand of someone who is going to cause harm to our children, and no one in this room wants to look back and say, "Shoulda, woulda, coulda." That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Frederick Oy. Okay. Karen Porter, followed by Ingrid Hernandez. Good evening.
I grew up in San Carlos, still have family here. I went to St. Charles and San Carlos High School. I consider those to be educational institutions, not the NRA. I don't trust a thing the NRA says. I proudly stand with my fellow citizens in support of the moratorium. I would actually go further for a complete ban. I would just add a couple comments. I noted that Turner's representative only grudgingly admitted they sell semi-automatic weapons when pressed. Now, I don't know much about hunting for sport. I prefer to rescue animals, but I doubt that there's any legitimate hunter worth their bullets who needs a semi-automatic weapon to take down a deer or anyone needs that to take out a home intruder, for that matter. Lastly, I would just like to mention a couple names you may recognize. Do I need my glasses? Emily Garcia Ward, age 7. Hattie Ward, age 5. Noah Holcomb, age 17 months. Those are just some of the youngest victims of the recent Texas massacre. I really, really don't want to see anything like that happening in San Carlos. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Ingrid Hernandez. Holly Lee, L-I-U. Holly?
Thank you so much, council members, for staying late and listening to our comments. My name is Holly, and I'm quite unique. I'm a San Carlos resident, and my hometown is Palmdale, California. I was born and raised in Palmdale, California, the place where Turner just opened up a store. Palmdale is a really wonderful place. We have Eagle Scouts graduating every year, and we also have a history of hunting and fishing in our local fin and feather club, where many of my friends worked. And more than enough people know a lot about gun safety, but that couldn't prevent my friend from dying from a gunshot accident. She was shot on accident by her brother's best friend, and the irony of it all is this happened while they were cleaning guns after they had gone shooting, and that was 10th grade. I truly believe that access to guns could have prevented this accident from happening that day, so I respectfully ask for a moratorium. For me, this is much more than a statistic or a number. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kathleen Goforth, followed by Meg Winslow. Kathleen Goforth. Okay.
Late, I thought for sure I'd be the last one.
Almost. You might be.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Goforth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I do appreciate your patience. I've lived in San Carlos for 30 years. I am a victim of gun violence. I've lost a family member to a gunshot. On the flip side, my grandmother won a rifle shooting contest. I'm not a bad shot myself, and my son likes to go duck hunting. But I'm here tonight because I do support the moratorium. I see absolutely no need for another gun store in San Carlos, and I believe that a store such as Turner's would be inconsistent with the character and image of this city. I'm particularly concerned by the fact that so many of Turner's existing stores have been robbed or burglarized as recently as 2016, so whatever the improvements are that they've instituted aren't working very well. I was disturbed to see that they are the number-one recruiter for the NRA, which, despite all of its gun safety classes, really does not have our best interests and safety at heart. And one thing that I haven't heard mentioned that I found very disturbing when I was researching this issue and looking at the Turner website is that they sell equipment, detachable gun stocks that essentially get around California's very sensible gun laws by adding to the magazine capacity of their guns so that you can shoot far more rounds, far more quickly. This is advertised on their website as a great plus to help with self-defense. I can't imagine a situation that any of us would be likely to be in where that would really be something we need. I strongly support the proposed moratorium. I think San Carlos can find better ways to bring in tax revenue. And I'd also like to respond to some of your earlier comments about how unfair this is to Turner. I did think about that.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're out of time.
I think it's outweighed by the community's concerns.
Thank you for your comments. Meg Winslow?
Meg Winslow, thanks again for having everybody here tonight. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I am neighbors with a very responsible gun owner, a safe as big as this, you know, in his garage, taught kids how to skeet shoot and all sorts of things, has a lot of dead animals on his wall that I'm not interested in, but he is. I think he's been very responsible. I think his house would be just as tough to break in as what Turner's planning to do. That's great. Those two places, and I'm sure there are more in San Carlos that are very secure, but I also, the first funeral I went to was an eight-year-old in Pop Warner outfit, whose brother accidentally shot him, and I have other stories like that. It's not worth mentioning. So I can see both sides of the issue, and I hope people here can see that. There is a heightened anxiety about what's going on in this country with guns, and I thought I'd just mention something that my son's father was just speaking to, was just being confirmed as the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Health Affairs in the Trump administration. He may get, confirmed or not, Dean Winslow, was a colonel retired in the Air Force. He said, "I may get in trouble with other members of the committee, but just say I know how insane it is that the United States of America, in the United States of America, a civilian can go out and buy a semi-automatic assault rifle, like an AR-15," which apparently was the weapon that was used. He doesn't know if he's going to be confirmed because of that comment in there, but he spoke up, and people here are just speaking up about their concerns, and I know I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter tonight? All right. Well, I want to compliment everyone who's here and everyone who was here for your civility and your respect of people and their comments. Thank you very much. You made me proud that showed what San Carlos is made of. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:00 P.M.
All right. Is there a second to that? Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number...
1526.
1526, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos pursuant to Government Code Section 65858A, imposing a moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunition or firearms as defined in Municipal Code Section 9.24.010.
Second. All right, it's moved in second. Discussion. Let me get back to mine. Okay, Mr. Alpert.
Wow, I didn't think I was going to be first. No, that's okay. No, no, it's fine.
Someone's got to be first.
Somebody's got to go. First of all, I just want to compliment everybody again, particularly when people heard things that they really didn't disagree with. I think it was great that everybody kept it under control, and, you know, that's testament to how great a place San Carlos is. I have some comments that I want to make that may strike some folks as perhaps not going far enough, and I'll close out with why you may think that. It's really important that everybody took the time to come in and share their concerns and perspectives and ideas and thoughts here tonight, and I'm glad everybody did. Decisions involving firearms are always challenging, and they always generate discussion and debate. There's nothing wrong with that. In fact, it's quintessentially American. We are, after all, a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Part of what makes firearm discussions complex is that guns, to my knowledge, are the only good or service that's specifically mentioned in our Constitution. That great guiding document does not protect the right to own a horse or a plow or an axe, even though each of those was as important as a firearm to the people who lived at the time the Constitution was ratified. But that very uniqueness demonstrates that the founders expected, expected government to play a role in how guns are owned, used, bought, and sold, because otherwise, they wouldn't have bothered to mention it, just like they didn't bother to mention all those other things. Firearms are in a special category, not to make them immune to community regulation, but simply to require that government of the people take great care when designing laws and regulations involving guns. That means it is perfectly reasonable and constitutional for San Carlos to draft local rules and regulations involving firearms, subject to constitutional constraints and the limitations imposed by state and federal law. But an important question beyond that is actually whether this council should engage in such discussions. There are a lot of things that come up that we could talk about, but we don't always do that because of limited time and priorities. But for me, the clearest answer to that question is contained in all the people who are here tonight and the sheer volume of emails, phone calls, letters, and personal outreach, people walking door-to-door and collecting signatures at a moment's notice, all about this proposed new gun store. Whether those people want us to take steps to stop the store from opening, control its location, regulate its operations, or simply leave it alone so it can open, an awful lot of residents care about the issues raised by the opening of a new gun store in San Carlos. In fact, I've told many people this is true. I've received more input on this topic than on any other issue that's come before me, and that's in 16 years as a local elected official. And we dealt with some pretty hot issues on the school board when I was there. As you might imagine, parents get a little bit concerned about their kids' schools. That alone argues strongly that this council should undertake a review of our existing rules and regulations governing firearm stores. But why impose a moratorium if all we need is a review? That's simple. Events can make decisions for us, preventing thoughtful review. By law, precedents greatly influence the rules and regulations which any government of the people can create. We need a moratorium to stop the music and give us time to learn, discuss, reflect, and decide. Is there a degree of unfairness to Turner in this? Yes, of course. But one of the very first lessons I learned as an elected official all those years ago is that none, and I mean none, of the important decisions that I've ever made on behalf of my community benefits everybody. That's not because we elected officials have a perverse desire to cause problems for our constituents. That's like the last thing that we want to do, because we like to get re-elected. It's because the simplest things we do are complex and inevitably create difficulties for somebody. I fully support enacting this moratorium and taking whatever time we need to thoroughly consider all the issues and factors involved in defining some good 21st-century regulations covering gun stores in our community. And for those of you who wonder why I may not go beyond that, since I was also the person on the council who Matt alluded to several times tonight, and others did as well, who kept bringing up the issue of why this council shouldn't, you know, should take up discussions of further gun, local gun regulation over the last few years. The reason I'm not going into that right now is, assuming we get the moratorium in place, which I hope we do, we will have time for all those discussions. And I have a lot of ideas about that. I've been learning a lot from other people as well. I've been learning a lot from many of you who have reached out to me. So I hope we get the moratorium. I definitely support it. Stay involved, stay engaged. Let's build an even better San Carlos than we have today. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody who took the time to make their voice heard as part of this important discussion. Whenever there are divisive issues that come before the City Council, I remind myself that my job essentially consists of three things. The first is to follow the law. The second is to listen to the community and try to represent your views. And then the third is to do my best to represent the entire community and think about your long-term best interests. So I'm going to be supporting the moratorium this evening. The first question I ask is, you know, is this legal? Do we have this authority? And as has been shown tonight, you know, the ability to regulate where businesses may locate, how they may operate, is something that we do quite often in the city. The second question is, what does the community want? A lot of times, that's very difficult to figure out. You guys made it very clear to me tonight. Many of you spoke out tonight, many, many more reached out via email or called me. I met with a number of you, and I want to tell you what I heard. Many of you told me that you have loved ones who were the victims of gun violence, or you yourselves were the victims of gun violence. Many of you have expressed anguish over, many of our fellow citizens have been the victims of gun violence, either through the, you know, countless daily shootings or some of the more horrific mass shootings in Newtown, Sutherland Springs, Las Vegas. Many of you, when you read the news and you hear of yet another random shooting, think to yourself, "Could that have been me? Could that have been my child?" And many of you are justifiably outraged that after all this accumulated tragedy, seemingly nothing has been done. Now, I want to say that a number of other people have spoken out and have shared emails with me that have a different perspective. For them, guns do not inspire fear, they make them feel safe. For them, guns are a symbol of freedom and liberty. It's a part of their lives. It's something that they've had since they were young children. And while I don't necessarily identify myself with those views, I do want to say that you can have those views and you can be a valued member of our community and that you deserve So, as I said, I think the community has been very clear where it stands this evening. Lastly, you know, I think about, well, what is in the long-term best interest of our entire community? And I want to share a couple thoughts with all of us tonight. One way to look at the discussion that we have tonight is that, you know, this is a proxy for the national debate on gun control. I actually don't think that's what this is. You know, if we pass this moratorium tonight, tomorrow, many people in San Carlos will own guns. Tomorrow, it will be legal to buy a gun in the city of San Carlos. And yet, San Carlos will still be a very safe, very welcoming, and very wonderful place to live. And while I personally would like to see our gun laws in this country dramatically changed, we do not have the authority to give that to you. So I want to actually challenge all of you and ask you to join with all of us on two things. The first is, if you believe that we need to reduce gun violence in this country and if you want to make a positive change, your advocacy must go beyond the city limits. if you want to make a positive change, your advocacy must go beyond the city limits. Ultimately, this is going to require a federal or state solution, and you need to continue to make your voices heard, and I will be there to support you. The second thing is that, you know, whenever we are faced with divisive issues, one of the things that comes out in a community like ours is a recognition that there are other people who are our neighbors who don't share the same view as we do. And we are all faced with a choice when we find that out. One, we can harden our views, and we can dismiss other people. And I think that there is way too much of that going on in this country right now. The other choice is to try to understand other people's views, to reach out, to look for common humanity, and to try and find common ground. And I hope that we can do that, not just on this issue, but on all of the divisive issues that are facing our country and our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to add my thanks to everybody who came out tonight and spoke and stayed. Just a truly amazing moment, it's just very, it's very humbling when you sit up here and you just watch all these passionate stories. But if I've learned one thing over the last two weeks, it's that people feel very passionately about this issue, as evidenced by the nearly 600 emails we've gotten. But this community's always been engaged. This is how we do things in San Carlos. We study things. We look at the best practices. We check out what other cities do and what, when they face similar issues. Our decisions are made only after we have had open and honest discussions based on facts and sound assumptions. As with our major police and fire department changes several years ago, temporary moratoriums on other businesses in town, citizen committees to review lot size, house rule, lots, house size rules, and zoning improvements to encourage financially stabilizing economic development, we have followed a deliberate and focused process. We have also made some decisions that weren't very popular with some, but they were in the best interest and benefit of the greatest number of people in town. We don't follow the crowd, and we're not intimidated by those who would question our intelligence and our patriotism, as some emails did, mostly by people from, who don't live here, some from Southern California, some from Texas. I was very happy to see so many San Carlos residents tonight. We listen to our residents. When they speak up, we pay attention, and they've spoken, and you've spoken loudly. We on the council are public servants. This is what public servants do. No one can claim that they are more American or more patriotic by the views they hold. It is our unique right, indeed our duty, as Americans, to debate issues like this before we decide how to move forward. Our goal is not to take anyone's right to own a gun away, but to make sure that whatever we do is well thought out within the law, preserves or enhances public safety for our residents, and is a reflection of the type of community our residents expected when they chose to live here. If this moratorium is put into effect, which I will fully support, it won't be because we don't like or want more guns, and it won't be because we cave to those trying to deny anyone their Second Amendment rights. It'll be because we want to make sure that we make the right decision for the right reasons for the people we were elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Grocott?
Well, I don't have any pre-written speech, because this is not supposed to be speech time. It's supposed to be discussion amongst council members. And that's something I'm very dismayed about, because what I saw here tonight was people coming with one side of a view, and very many, obviously a high percentage, and then a few people come with a different view. And I was really dismayed, well, the rest of the council thinks you're all great, and I'm not saying you're not great, but it was very disappointing to me when this gentleman in the blue shirt over here, he was the first guy to get up and talk about the NRA and owning a gun and so forth. And he, I could tell by the audience's noises that they were making that they didn't like what he was saying. But he sat through, you know, an hour and a half of other people's comments, and he never, he was quiet, I watched him, never said a word or made a noise. And yet, some of you folks had to show your disappointment with what he was saying. I heard a lot about the NRA tonight, what a bad organization it is. Well, that's because you're opposed to guns. The NRA is a good organization, in my opinion. The NRA, if you get involved with the NRA, they're all about training, teaching you how to own a firearm, what the laws are. Don't laugh, it's true. It is true. I'm looking at this gentleman here.
We're having a discussion here. Go ahead.
So, it's a good organization. All these gun violence incidents that you've heard about, has it ever been an NRA member that has done that? I, you know, I challenge you to find an incident where it was an NRA member. I can't remember of any. Not recently, not, you know, Sandy Hook, not Las Vegas, none of them. And that's because the NRA is all about teaching the proper way to use a gun, to own a gun, to store a gun, et cetera. And you may not agree with that, but it's true. I find it interesting that this whole thing with everybody knowing about Turners, from at least my understanding of the story, happened because of a priest at a church in town saw the sign that this gentleman put up, saying, "We're going to be opening our store, and we're going to be hiring." Now, that same priest, his church, put up a sign that was three sheets of plywood on the corner where his church is located, and it was painted, you know, rainbow colors, and it said, "All are welcome here." Well, I checked with city staff. Did that church come to the city to see about getting a permit for that sign? No. I asked city staff, if they had, would they have been allowed to put it up? Well, maybe, because there are ordinances about how much signage you can have and where you can locate it and so forth. But the sign went up, and it stood there, and I asked city staff, did anybody from the city staff notice it and go and talk to the church about, you know, it not being properly, in the proper place, or whatever? Well, even if we had noticed it, we didn't, I don't know that anybody did is the answer I got, but even if we had, we wouldn't have done anything about it, because we'd go on a complaint basis. That's pretty typical in San Carlos. If you're, no one complains against something you're doing, then you're allowed to do it. But the, the point is, there was a leniency towards that church's right to free expression, which it's not, people talk about, oh, it's a Second Amendment right, or it's a constitutional right. No, it isn't. It's a God-given right. It's a natural right. You have those rights because you're a human being. Now, Mark talked about the Second Amendment, it's the only, you know, property thing that the Constitution mentions in the Bill of Rights. Well, it's not because, it's not mentioned in there because the founders, or the framers, excuse me, the framers of the Constitution wanted government involved. Quite the contrary, it reads, "shall not be infringed." That's saying, government, stay out of this. And what I find interesting about the Second Amendment is that, if you read the First Amendment, it says, "Congress shall make no law infringing upon free speech, religion, and other things." Second Amendment doesn't say anything about the federal government. It just says, "shall not be infringed." It doesn't mention by what government, it just says it won't be. Somebody said that Rob here should have looked at San Carlos better. Well, maybe he did. Maybe he looked at those two council meetings where it was brought up that maybe we should look at gun sales and gun stores and so forth, and he got, it was brought up by Mark one time, and I think it was brought up by Ron one time. And there wasn't any support on the council to discuss the issue. Maybe Rob saw that and said, hey, here's a good place to go, because there's not a majority on the council that wants to make issue out of this. People talked about, that's a bad location, because my kids go to swim academy, or this, you know, there's other stores around there. You know, if you go over to Dublin, there's a store called Guns, Fishing, and Other Stuff, and it's right there next to a bunch of other stores, right in the heart of Dublin, which is just over, you know, on 580. Little town, not too different from San Carlos, except it's right there next to Livermore, which, by the way, population, I think, 80,000, and they have three or four gun stores in So I've never heard of anything happening in Dublin, and there's a gun store right there. There's not much that's happened in San Carlos, all the years that we've been here, and all the years that Smithers and Ebert have been here, just a few incidents, and that's it. I'm dismayed that so many people are afraid of guns. If you're that afraid of a gun, and you've probably never handled one, never, never been involved with guns too much. Yes, they are frightening if they're misused, and you need to know what you're doing when you're handling one, but you don't have to be afraid of them. To me, what all this boils down to, I just gave my little speech because everyone else has, but really, the issue at hand here is a moratorium. And if we do a moratorium, the city manager is set. It'll be two years. So one of two things will happen. We'll end up with lawsuits on our hand from either Turners, or a gun organization like the NRA, or the California Rifle and Pistol Association, or we cut it short and Turners is allowed to open their stores, their store. I find it wholly unfair to say to them, we're putting a moratorium, and the $125,000 you've invested, kiss it goodbye. And I, another thing I asked city staff about was, when we've done moratoriums in the past, have they been to prevent a business entirely from operating in San Carlos, or is it like we did with the Dollar Store? You know, which had made no investment. All they did was ask a realtor about that particular location, and that's as far as they got, and we heard wind of it and said, oh, boy, we need to do an emergency ordinance to prevent a Dollar Store from going in where B and Kini's is. But that, that's all they had done. But it's not like we said, no Dollar Stores in San Carlos. We just said, no, we don't want one there. When we did a moratorium on banks and hair parlors and nail salons, we didn't say, you can't have any more in San Carlos. We just said, if you're going to put another one in, it has to be so many doors away from an existing one. So the moratoriums we've done haven't been to prevent a business from happening, but what I hear from most, most of you who've spoken tonight, you're so afraid of guns, it's like, we don't want any more gun stores, ever, 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 in San Carlos, and then Ebert and Smithers closes, we want it gone. And that's what you want. I know, that's what you want. This man's nodding his head in approval.
Okay, hold on, let's finish up.
Yeah, so I'm going to finish up here. So I will not vote in favor of a moratorium, because it's not fair. It's not fair for this business to have gotten as far along as they did with their application, and because a priest from a church finds out about it, and then pretty soon we have a firestorm, well, that's not fair. And by the way, we're not a democracy, we're a republic. That's my closing statement.
As the hour is late, I'll just make a couple of comments, and we can vote. You know, I tried, every, I've always said, I always tried to talk to everybody about everything, all sides. I met with the Turner folks. I met with folks on the other side of the issue. I read as much as I could. I might be the only, I'm not sure, I guess I might be the only person up here that wasn't a military, and have handled weapons before. This is an issue to me of community standards. That's just what it boils down to. And what kind of standards does the community want? And it's pretty evident to me what kind of standards, at this point, the community wants. I think we need to take a breath, as I think you used the term, or one of the gentlemen used the term, and put this moratorium into effect and see what we can come out of it, whether that means we'll have sporting goods and gun stores allowed, or whether there'll be more restrictions. I think we need to discuss it a little more, and that's where I'm going to end up, and that's where we'll go. So having said that, I'll call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Hell, yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. So, that concludes item 8A. We have two or three other items to go here. I'm going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we'll go from there. Mr. Hugans, as indicated, we need to have a motion to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we extend the meeting to 11:15.
Okay, there's a motion for 11:15. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
11:15. We will come back here at approximately 11 o'clock. Let's make it seven minutes.